Lisa, if you could lead us in the pledge, please.
Our pledge leads us to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces. Next, Mr. Gold?
Matt Erickson, Buckingham Road. I'm here tonight because I'm on the reappointment for the community center committee. I want to apologize to you, first of all, for my first appointment because I didn't know I was on the agenda, so I didn't show you the respect of showing up because I didn't even know I was on it that night. I found out from a friend that I was appointed. I'd just like to mention that we have not been very successful, but please don't think it's because of the entire committee because many members of this committee have worked diligently, they've been in every meeting. I think the problem was we were overwhelmed by a committee of 25, and trying to get a quorum was an absolute nightmare. Since May 3rd, we haven't had a quorum. And there's, we have narrowed down the list. I'm just hoping it's narrowed enough that it's going to still work and we will be able to do our job and actually report back to you what we believe we should be doing. I'd still like clarification as to if we're supposed to be looking at the community center at Pettibone or if we're just supposed to be looking at it as a whole for any place in the town. I'm still rather confused about that little issue. Other than that, the only other thing I'd like to say is I read on Facebook, because that's where we get our news these days, not from the paper, about the issues up at Lynn Demming Park. I'd like to commend the mayor for stepping up and doing the job that others should have been doing, apparently. I have heard that you received phone calls and you personally took the time to go up there with police officers. I heard, this is only rumor, if it's not true, I apologize, I heard we had New York cars in there, I heard we had alcohol in there, and it was out of control. I don't like hearing that. I myself don't use the park, haven't used it in 20 years, but I believe the citizens in this town should be the ones who are using it, not New Yorkers. And I think it needs to be looked into. I went to the park and rec office today to pick up a sticker just so I could drive it and see what the park actually looks like, not that I intend to use it, but you can only buy them at the gate, which I also think is an issue that needs to be looked at because there's a lot of people that go up and down Route 7, and it might be more convenient if they could go into the park and rec office. And two things, they could see what we actually have in the building and how the building is run, and maybe we'd get more inflows to public input about Pettibone. And thank you all for your service because I know it's not always appreciated.
Thank you.
Now, I talked to Walters the other day and he said he wouldn't be here tonight because he's on vacation, so I can stretch my time to my limit. First off, before I start, I would like to take just a second and praise Peter Coleman, the lifeguard who saved the young eight-year-old boy from possibly drowning. He did a marvelous job, and I just wanted to recognize him for that. So, it goes to show that all the training and the effort and the observation of people like him maybe goes unnoticed, but they're not lacking in their job and they're noticing everything that goes on. So, great job for Peter Coleman. The first thing I have is town council members. We have seven here tonight, which includes the mayor. This is about missing the meetings. To me, it's not acceptable to me because the person who voted for every single one of you on this town council, I voted for all 10 of you, okay? And I don't mind saying that, Democrat and Republican alike, I voted for all your people. To me, except in an emergency, I expect them to be here to submit their resignation, okay, because they're not doing to the job that they ran for office for and the position. So, Mr. Mayor, I'm charging you to make sure that this is done from now on. Unless it's an emergency, I expect people to be here. Second is, I need to have you folks getting a job justification for me of every job position in the school system and why they are needed. I feel we have more educators than necessary with population reduction. I will be grilling the Board of Education on this as well in the future, but I want answers from you folks, okay? I'm relying on you folks to take care of me. What I want to know again also is who is receiving this, who is researching the state and federal government for money to subsidize the special needs and handicapped students in our school system? Why are we filling the bill for this every year? There are many money and grant things available, and I expect you folks and the Board of Education to find it so that it can reduce our taxes. I need you to research the state Connecticut Lotto and find out where all the interest money gain is going. It was created years ago to offset education costs, and as far as I can see from research, we haven't received a cent. So, where is this going? Sponsor mentions for me, please. Now, the last item on my list, okay, and I hope you don't take this the wrong way, but I want to make sure that no one on the town council is being held hostage by the Board of Education. This year, no matter what they got, what they wanted, they got what they wanted, and at no time did they offer up a flat budget, period. So, I need an answer in writing from you as to why they baulked so hard on this bad, bad budget here, okay? There was no need for that. It would have been, it would not have hurt the Board of Education, the school system, one single bit, from my perspective, if they'd have had a flat budget, just like the town here.
Jeff, you have one minute.
Okay. Now, the pay-for-play issue. If the Board of Education eliminated just one nonessential job in the system that requires money, there would be no pay-for-play. That is why I want an accounting of all job positions in the school system. I feel we are paying for spots that are not necessary. Thank you.
Great, ma'am.
I'm Terry Moeller, 39 Medical Drive. Speaking as a citizen and as a community center committee member. I'm looking at the agenda list or the community center, it looks like appointment list, reappointment list, and I would ask that you pare this down more. I think it's too large, and there's a lot of people here that do not participate. So, I would like to see the people that do not participate taken off and help us get a better quorum, a better quality of work. Also, I'm glad Mr. McBride already said something about attendance because it's clearly an issue on committees as well. I know it's a volunteer position, but maybe a tool can be put in place to allow committees or maybe the town council, if in certain situations people are not attending by a certain percentage, that they can be removed and replaced. Thank you.
One more is Michelle Legori.
Hi, Michelle Legori, two Tremita Court, New Milford. I am the chairperson of the community center committee, which two people have already spoke about tonight. We are on the agenda. I spoke with the mayor on Friday, so I'm aware of everything that's on the agenda. A couple of things that I just wanted to address. As was mentioned already, we started with a committee of 25. Two people resigned, and then two people never showed up for any of the meetings. So, we actually found out that they were never sworn in. So, the list that we have tonight on the agenda is for 21 people to be reappointed. Once people saw that that was on the agenda, I started getting emails from the committee members. So, four different people asked if they could step down from the committee and into more of an advisory position where they can attend the meetings but not necessarily vote and not be counted towards a quorum. Now, I know that in order to officially resign, they have to do that through the town clerk's office, and because our next meeting is not until July 19th and there's no town council meeting until August, we can't vote yet on whether or not to even have an advisory panel. So, I'm asking tonight if we could kind of, if it's possible to pare down the list, as Greg had mentioned, maybe preemptively, knowing that some people have asked to step down. I don't know if that's even possible. And then the other thing that we really need to define is what exactly is a quorum? We've been operating under the assumption that it is a half plus one, so with our initial size of the committee being 25, we were working on a quorum of 13. I don't know if that's accurate. If we, you know, obviously if we pare down the committee, then the quorum will be much easier for us to attain, especially with people never showing up to meetings. But if a quorum was, say, you know, a third, then we'd only need seven out of our 21, and then we wouldn't even have an issue. But otherwise, I guess, that's really all I came to say. We've been working very, very hard. People in our committee are putting in a lot of time outside of our meetings, and they're doing a great job. We have a lot of people who care about this town and really want to do what the people want, so we're looking for that extension so that we can just keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, motion to approve the prior minutes?
Second.
Any discussion?
Correction. Sorry, Stephanie. Page 8, paragraph 4. I believe the words are "Job description includes generally 175 jobs." It's actually 75 to 100 jobs per year. So, if we could make that change, that'd be awesome. And per year, not in total. That's it.
Any other adjustments to the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is the mayor's remarks. So, first, one thing that's very special about our town is our youth. It's one of our bedrocks of our community. And in saying that, I'd like to congratulate our district baseball teams of our youth in New Milford baseball and softball program. The 10 U Hitmen were district runners-up. Our 11 U Cyclones are district champions. Our 12 U Bulldogs are district champions. Our 13 U Regulators, district champions. Our 15 U Riverhawks, all district champions. Kudos to the baseball side of the program. Outstanding. For our girls softball programs, our 12 U, three-time state champions. Outstanding. Our 8 U, state champions. So, it's great to see that program thrive as it has and will continue to do so. I compliment the coaches, the staff, the parents for representing our town the way they do. I'd also like to commend, as was done prior in the evening, in our moment is our lifeguards at Lynn Demming. I'd like to congratulate Mr. Ryan Logan, who saved an 11-year-old. I'd like to thank lifeguard Peter Coleman, our head lifeguard, who had two saves, one an eight-year-old girl, another an eight-year-old boy. I'd also like to thank lifeguard Tamis Bureau, I hope I'm pronouncing his name correctly, but all three of these lifeguards, outstanding work. Thank you for what you do. I'm also pleased to announce a few other things, some of these I'm just updating you on. First one is, I spoke about it our last town council meeting, we now are in partnership with Webster Bank and Savings Bank of Danbury to take your tax payments. So, if you so choose and want to get a receipt, you can go there on a Saturday, if you so choose, saving your time instead of coming to town hall where we're open from 8:30 to 4:00, you can go to the bank. So, we appreciate those efforts by the banks to partner with us for convenience to our taxpayers. Also, I'd like to talk about the fact that we met last week, our emergency management team, which consists of our fire marshal, our New Milford police, our New Milford fire, our New Milford ambulance, at New Milford High School. And one of the things you will see on tonight's thing is a grant that we're going to be pursuing, where we went to the high school, which we're going to be going to all the schools to talk about active shooter and safety and new protocols that we'll be putting in place to enhance the safety of our students. Our students are very safe as they are today, but we want to look to make it even safer. So, I want to thank all the members that were there as we went through New Milford High School. I want to thank the high school, our partners there as well, to show us, the high school, show us where some of the safety protocols are in place now and more things we can do to make it better. With that in mind, too, is we knew we had a big chunk of a heat wave. Temperatures in the heat indexes were over 100 degrees. I'd like to thank our emergency management team and our CERT team for providing cooling shelters for those in need. When temperatures are that hot, it's important that those residents in need have a place where they can go to seek some sort of cooling throughout the day. So, I want to thank our partners in that respect and helping out those in need. An update, too, on our lunch bunch program. This is a program that doesn't cost the taxpayers a penny. This is all volunteers. And as I spoke to the council before, about giving children that need a lunch, that can't get one when it's in the summertime, the opportunity for a lunch. So, I'd like to let the public and the council know that there are over 130 children that have signed up for this program, and due to the wonderful nature of our community, as it always does in pulling together, we're able to offer them a lunch. Not only a lunch, in some days, a breakfast. Also during the weekends, thank you to the United Way, we're able to give them food for over the weekend. So, I can't thank people enough for doing that. And to continue moving forward, you can come to the mayor's office if you'd like to donate, which some of you in the audience already have, and I can't thank you enough. And for those that are watching tonight, you can come to the mayor's office. Also, for those that have given their donations, their treasure, we can't thank you enough for helping our children. Next, I'd also like to talk to you about is I had the privilege of attending Reverend Michael Moran's retirement service, and it was a true blessing to go there, to see someone in the community that served our community, now is retired, and it was great to be a part of that opportunity and to say thank you on behalf of the town for his commitment to the town in New Milford. I'd also like to thank the chamber, the New Milford fire, the New Milford police department, ambulance, and the CERT team for all their efforts for our Fourth of July celebration. For those of you that saw there were other towns that had some issues with their fireworks, we did not. Beautiful fireworks, I thought they were outstanding, though I'm biased, and if there was something that would happen, our emergency services and responders were available. It was great to see the chamber, as they have, put on a wonderful event, live music. We had our restaurants downtown, lots of people going down to the carnival put out by the Lions Club as well. Hamburgers were good down there, I can attest to that. Thank you to the Boy Scouts. And it was just a wonderful event for all, so I can't thank everybody enough. As we're continuing to move forward on our road work, good news is our bids are going to be coming in this week for Lynn Demming, for, I'm sorry, for Long Mountain and for Squire Hill. Those are two big projects that we're going to be working this year, so we're going to be breaking ground and moving forward. We also have band roads that we're working on. Those are going to be in process, as well as other mill and paving and other work that we're going to be doing. Some of the work that you've already seen is currently in process. One part is the actual rotary that you see. So, currently, what we're waiting for with that, as you can see, they were pouring some of the concrete on the apron, the truck side of the apron, which is going to meet the strength requirements before placing traffic on the road. We're also going to be implementing Phase 3, which is going to be taking effect June 30th. We're prepping two-thirds of the road apron, and that's under our Phase 2B. So, that's work in progress. For Town Farm Road, the highway's going to begin with their drainage work tomorrow. During the day, starting tomorrow, from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., the road will be closed to through traffic. This will take three weeks, and then will be followed by milling, paving, and curbing. They're assigning on, there's signage already on Town Farm Road to let you know the detours that you need to take to make sure that you drive safely as we continue that work to complete the work. The trees that have been taken down on Town Farm Road already, so that process is in place. As you'd see on Railroad Street, some of the catch spaces have been marked with their asset ID numbers. That's so we can begin finalizing the details of replacement of the catch basin tops for the mill and pave of Railroad Street. Some of the things, as I met with our road committee and our Department of Public Works today, is we're working on finalizing our five-year capital plan for our roads. And the reason why we're doing that is giving you, the public, the opportunity to know which roads that we're going to be doing moving forward. It then begins to even out the process, making the process more efficient, so that we can design our roads sooner rather than later, which gives us the opportunity to bid at an earlier time, thus a better price on our roads. So, we're to continue to hone in on that, drive efficiencies within the process, so that we can do more roads for you, the taxpayers. Also, I'd like to talk to you about Lynn Demming. It's going to be brought up here tonight, and I just wanted to give you a quick synopsis. After I went up on the Fourth of July, I spoke with our chairman, Lisa, and I spoke with Eleanor, I've spoken with Dan today, and I spoke with Tom Beecher. And we all agree on one thing, and that is we're going to work together to solve a problem. And that is the problem is that our parks during some peak times get overrun with people that have not paid their way into our park. I asked our director today, how many non-residents have bought a pass? He's here tonight, and he'll tell you. Four. Four people. So, anybody that was at that park can definitely know that there was more than four non-residents at our park. So, one thing we're definitely going to do as a team and working together is find solutions to make sure that that park is secure, the park is safe, and the park New Milford residents can enjoy. So, I'm very excited, I was working together, coming up with some opportunities that we'll talk about a little bit later. Also, as there are other parks, like Addus Park, we're going to be working on more enforcement there as well and working at other opportunities to help our residents, because that's what it's all about, working for our taxpayers and our residents here. Also, too, real quickly, as Chairman Legori brought up as well, is the community subcommittee. We did speak last week, and she did tell me the need for us to reduce the membership, which I agree with the chair. So, tonight, when we do get there, I will ask town attorney if there's the opportunity, when we do reduce the number, can we add on with this bodies agreement and advisory committee tonight so that we could finish up that process and let them continue their work on bringing their results back to us at the town. With that, I'd like to move on. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item five, Lynn Demming. Move regarding Lynn Demming Park as it pertains to rules and procedures per this document that you have in your possession.
Dan? Can I call up Dan?
If you have some information I'd like to pass out.
Perfect. Thank you, Dan.
Somebody's taking a moment. Second.
Kind of Walter's not here, we're going to be talking about it.
You can take his, please.
I'm shy. I'd like to come right quick.
Pay attention. Oh.
We got one, Captain.
Two parts, thank you. You can pass him on to Mr. Tom.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I spoke with the mayor at length about the issues at Lynn Demming Park this morning, and he had spoken with our past chairman and our current chairman about it. There are some enforcement issues that are going on at Lynn Demming Park. What we've come to learn is that there's quite a few non-residents that are either sneaking into the woods off of Candlewood Lake Road North. It was recently, First Light redid their access road. So, now we're getting people that are parking on the side of the road and walking right down that new road and easy access to the park to sneak in through the back, through the woods. That's one big issue that we're having. And then another issue is that people are bringing, bringing in, residents are bringing in non-residents. And we've caught numerous people trying to make numerous trips in and out, but apparently that was going on also. Those are two of the main issues that I think that are going on in the park that we have to resolve. The way that we're looking to do it, I've talked to the mayor, we're thinking about possibly a manager, a beach manager, that would be there on weekends and on heavy flow days like a holiday. And also, we will be meeting with our security company to review the rules with them, so they all understanding, and we're going to ask that they review it with all of their employees that are there day and night. Those seem to be the biggest problems. I think this weekend was a perfect storm. It was the first Fourth of July that we've had perfect weather. Very hot, everybody wanted to get to the water. People have learned what a beautiful park this is now with the renovations, and they've found ways to break the rules. Every year, we review our rules, change our rules, to try to solve these issues, but every year they find different ways to get in. So, there's some ideas that we want to try to address immediately.
And I know just for the council's edification, and then Katie, I'll defer to you, but some of the things that Dan and I talked about, as well as Eleanor, and Lisa, was the opportunity there's the portion where a lot of the out-of-towners were coming was down the hill, just put a fence, see if there's an, put some fencing there, so they're going to check that out. Also, the opportunity, because the town has invested an additional $1.2 million into this facility, it's absolutely gorgeous, is seeing if there's an opportunity that we could put a camera system in there as well to help with our security. So, Katie, I'll defer to you for a moment.
Dan, two questions. The fence is the first thing I'm thinking of. Since they have a source put that road in, is there any opportunity for them to provide some sort of fencing so that it doesn't fall on us?
That's the first thing we have to do. We have to speak with Brian Wood at First Light to see if that's something they would help us with since, you know, they, since that. And then also, we would have to, you know, if, I'd have to get...
Do they have the authority to ask those people to leave?
Yes.
Oh.
If they had broken the rules, yes, they do.
Okay. And if I said I brought them all in my car, they, you know, it was like going to the drive-in with the 15 people in your car, what would they do? I mean, do they have the authority to actually try to get somebody out of the park?
Well, I think they don't have any legal power, so.
Oh, that's.
You know, if something like that happened, we would have to call the police.
Okay. I see. Thanks.
Sir, I mean, besides the clue what you can fit in your car, there's no limit to how many guests you can bring in, and how often you can bring them in?
No. The only thing we have, you can bring in guests in your vehicle. I mean, if you have a small, if you have a minivan, you can bring in whatever you can fit.
But you can't drop them off and go back out to your house and bring more?
Correct.
And we don't want to limit that, like how many times you can bring guests, or, because it seems like if one person gets a pass, and as I said, people learn how to abuse rules, they're going to start abusing it pretty quickly. I mean, I don't know how you stop it, but it seems like, you know, if you're a resident of Milford, not a homeowner, but just renting here, and you have a lot of friends from out of town, you know, it drains on the resources.
It does.
So that's part of the rules and procedures now, Mike, if I'm correct, right, Dan?
Yes.
You can't ferry people in and out.
No, but as you said, if you own a minivan, that's, you know, or a suburban, which a lot of people own, that's nine people you bring in, or eight people.
Doug?
Oh, that's a good segue. No, being a Park and Rec member myself, and we've juggled this same thing over the last few years, and like Dan said, it was a perfect storm. Many of you know Dyke's Point was closed, and now you have to go on and have a reservation. We're also having problems because Quan's Pond, so a lot of influx from maybe the city and stuff, and they're also coming in the Carlson Grove. So the last couple of years, we've noticed a higher traffic, and this is something that's out of the norm that we're going in. So we've addressed the same thing over the meetings, trying to find a happy medium. But again, Wednesday happened to be a perfect storm, where it was hot, people are looking for ways to find the lake and the water, and a lot of people from out of town will find other ways to come out. Now, Brookfield, New Fairfield, they have a little bit more fenced off and concentrated where you can't get in. And Dan mentioned that now there's new access ways because of the construction, so I'm happy that you guys got to meet today, and I'm very confident that us as commission will figure out a way to lease the park better.
Lisa?
So what do we pay the security company? What's the contract amount per year?
Yeah, it's about $45,000 for the year.
And do you think that they're fulfilling, based upon the event, their $45,000 worth?
Well, I think we have to re-educate them. They really have to know the rules inside and out. They're members. I mean, the owners know it, but I think their actual security guards that are there need to know these rules inside and out.
So when you say "security guard," I'm thinking of bouncer in a bar. Picture a big guy with big shoulders.
Oh, no.
Is that a more fit?
No, you get a little, you get everything.
No.
Anybody from the community, it could be.
All right. Picture your grandma. First question. Second question, and this is a little off the wall, but a little patience. Do we need, because you talked about recognizing non-residents, do we need like day ski passes? Like little colored wristbands, so that somebody from the security company could easily verify yes or no, this person has paid for a pass or they haven't? Idea number one. And idea number two, do you want to rethink? I saw both on the website and in the materials tonight, you can't purchase a day pass at the entrance. I know it would gum things up, but like the recycle center went to a cashless system. Do we want to rethink that? Because then people have to stop, you got to pay, as a deterrent. It's not going to fix the sneaking part, but at the gate, it would deter people from trying to circumvent the system. Just a thought.
The reason why we started this in the first place, it used to be day passing, you could get them at the gate. We stopped that, and only, there are only, non-residents are only allowed to get them Monday through Friday at our office between the hours of 7:30 and 4:00. That limits a lot of people that want, non-residents that want to come in on the weekends.
So that was our purpose, was to limit the non, confirm non-residents?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha.
If I can say that in public.
You can. So again, back to my little wristband idea, if we, if we color-code people, like with a ski pass, would that be helpful? I don't know what that would cost, but maybe something to think of.
Yep. And, you know, unfortunately, we thought that was going to be the issue, but by, like the mayor said, we only sold four this year, so people have found other ways to get in without paying.
Right. So if you can quickly visually identify the residents, then that might give the security guys a little more confidence, and girls some confidence to call the police and say, "Look, clearly this group doesn't belong here, they don't have a wristband."
Yes.
Has there ever been a thought of charging a nominal fee for non-residents even though they're with a guest? I mean, it just seems to me, as I said, if I'm coming as one individual with six other guests, you have six non-paying people using our facilities. I don't understand why we wouldn't want to get some kind of income from them, and as another, as another, you know, partially deterrent, partially if they're going to use it, they might as well be paying the fee, because, you know, our taxpayers that don't use Lynn Demming, as you noted earlier, are helping the fee to pay for that, and then the users pay for it a little bit more, and now you have non-residents going basically for free, so neither taxpayer nor are they paying to get in. It just doesn't seem like it's equitable at all.
Kind of, sorry to interject, but to me, to me, I don't think it's the fee of the non-resident, because they only sold four. It was the non-residents just inundating the park and not paying.
Sneaking in.
So to me, so to me.
But if you sell them a wristband, all she had, it takes 10 seconds to walk around and realize who doesn't have their wristband on, to kick them out, as you said. If this wristband, if it costs a dollar, the wristbands, you know, you get them in the thousands, are not that expensive. It just seems to me, and you can use a different color wristband.
Yeah, but you're not going to have every resident in town that has a park pass, every person steps into that park with a wristband.
Right, right. And there's no enforcement.
You do the Jersey Shore.
There's no enforcement tool to take care of that.
That's why we're not at the Jersey Shore. But I can understand, and I agree with you with the park pass, but the wristband for people who are non-residents, but almost everybody at that park sees the same people every single week. I mean, there are a thousand families there with their kids every, almost every day. So it's pretty easy to pick out the people who are not, who are not there all the time, and I agree with you with the wristband, but.
There's no enforcement.
Anybody who respond on everybody showing up this way.
There's nobody to enforce it. So if we walk down the beach and the security person is with me, and he sees five people who have no wristband or no obvious way to be there, except that they snuck in, what's he going to do, or she?
I thought the procedure was ask them to leave, they don't leave, call the police.
Well, yeah, but clearly that procedure, I mean, it isn't always bad. It has gotten worse as times gone on, but there's always been people who sneak in. Do you feel that it is a bit of an anomaly, because it was, as we know, the other places are closed? I mean, I think you should tighten it up.
Oh, yeah.
But do you think that there's a reason to, to change drastically in our?
I think we need, I think we need to address things, definitely. I mean, like you said, there's always been people that find a way to get in.
And retraining your security people for $45,000 for two people, they're only three, only on holidays?
On holidays, yes, and two on the weekends, but this is, they're 24 hours a day. So they're from Memorial Day through Labor Day, and then they're there part-time until Columbus Day. So they're there 24 hours a day, and, you know.
Yeah, well.
We also have an issue with a lot of boats coming in and parking in the dock as well, coming in to use, whether the pavilion, the beach, the bathrooms, and stuff like that. So, you know, we, as a commission, we've dealt with it, but again, this Wednesday happened, the perfect storm, anomaly, weird apparition, whatever you want to use for a word, but as a whole, the park has done, you know, the Park and Rec Commission's done a great job.
Great job, right.
This happened to be one incident, and then, you know, we can all learn and work together from a mistake, and, not a mistake, but something that out of the ordinary happens.
Are there signs posted, Dan, that say, "When I pull my boat up, do not tie your boat up, this is not, this is a New Milford resident park all night"?
No, that's, that's another thing. We're going to put signage up there and actually on the pavilion, because people are, like we found out.
Is there, there is a sign at the gate?
Yes, there's a big sign.
Are there any signs around in the opening now with that new road?
Not over there.
I just don't know how we enforce it, and I think we don't tell them not to do it.
Right.
It's sort of the rule, right? Don't trespass.
Well, I think the big thing, we have been in contact with the traffic authorities from the police department, and I think with all of us working together with enforcement, so people aren't parking up there, there's already no parking signs, if we can get some more signs, can have enforcement there, that's going to stop.
And our police department, they do still circle around, don't they?
Yes.
So Dan, if we could, I see you gave us, yeah, I'm sorry.
Listen, every three or four years, we've had, this issue has come up, this is not the first time.
Correct.
And, and I do agree with Doug's statement, it was the perfect storm of the Fourth of July, in the middle of the week, perfect weather, extremely hot. But this has been a problem that's gone on for a lot of years, right? And you guys, we bring it up, we address it, things are, you know, everybody gets this, gets the, gets the idea, you can't come into the park, and then a couple of years later, that loosens up again. So I hope whatever we were doing now is going to be a little bit more permanent. I do think that there's an opportunity at that gate, to maybe another round of funding, come up with a mechanized gate that takes your sticker, just like when I go to the car wash for my monthly pass, and lets me in to get my car washed, to even let a resident go in and out of there. It's going to take a picture of his license plate, you're going to know exactly who's coming through the door. I think there should be cameras shooting at the dock and something at, and down the beach. And that stuff that, that is the type of system, we are going to hold that information for about 10 days, not going to be viewed by everybody, so we're going to keep our privacy of our residents here. But if there's an incident on a boat or at the beach, you're going to have that video, you know. Separate from this, and this is something I've brought up almost every year, and I know Eleanor's going to cringe, but number 26, swimmers must remain in designated swimming areas.
Oh, yeah.
This is something I have brought up for years. I've lived around Candlewood Lake since I moved here in 1973. There are people who swim outside of designated swimming areas all the time, but they have signage that you swim at your own risk. Now, at the very beginning, rule number two is, swimming when lifeguards are off-duty is dangerous. It sounds wonderful, but if you're down there at 6:00 in the morning, there were people swimming outside the designated areas. After 6:00, the bell goes off down there, and people were swimming everywhere. I think we need to really have a legal opinion on what type of signage we need. So adults, I'm not talking about kids, little kids that need to be saved, I'm talking about adults, who I've had many a parent come up and say, "I'd like to jump in the water with my, with my swim hands and do laps all the way back and forth here," but I've actually seen lifeguards, and this was a few years ago, barking at adults, which they don't do anymore, which I'm going to compliment you, you guys, on making sure that the lifeguards understand the difference between talking to a child and an adolescent, as opposed to the way they speak to adults, which has been much better, much better. But I think you really have to come up with something on rule 26. Quite frankly, if you're down there, and you're an adult, and the buses show up, like the other day, there's not a lot of places for adults to go in there and have a nice piece of spot. But I could see floating off to the side safely as a, as a, as a, as a good swimmer, not for kids, but we need to do something with this rule number 26. It's been, it's been in my craw for a long time. So please, besides all the security that we need to have, and I agree with what my colleagues are saying, we need to look at this rule. Thank you.
Thank you.
One more? Do we do boat stickers? I was listening to the conversation about boats pulling up to the, so we sell resident boat stickers.
Yes.
Okay. And on the area leading up to the First Light access, do we have, you will be towed signs? Is it a tow zone?
You mean on the side or there?
Yeah. I was just thinking, that might be another deterrent. If there were tow, if there were tow signs along the road.
Do they have signs on their new access road that say?
They have them all right along that road area. I'm not sure if they say, you know.
They say, "No parking."
No parking.
But if they said, "If you find your car missing, call Brownies Towing," phone number, that's a big deterrent. Right?
Put Tom's number on there.
They do that at some holders.
I don't want to drag this on, but I have another question for Dan. So since we're looking at the items, I think your language in a couple of these things is a little too.
Nice.
Like number seven, littering is prohibited, please help keep your park clean. How about, do we find anybody caught littering?
No, I don't, we don't have the authority to find like that.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I mean, please, okay. And then the number 11, infants and toddlers should wear, should wear swim diapers if not potty trained. How about we put "must"? Because you have not, I mean, should, you have no, you're not really making it strong enough. If I have my baby doing the business in the water, and we all swim in that water, I just, you know, let's say what we mean. And I don't think anybody wants a baby without a diaper.
To Katie's point, can we give them the signing authority, or finding authority? Or does finding authority come from?
I don't know who we do it.
No? All right. I see two of all yours shaking their heads.
Nope.
All right.
Police authority. Dan, if you could, I know you gave us two handouts, the one where you're talking about some of the additional things, starting with number one. Could we kind of go over that real quick?
Sure.
See if the council has any questions on it.
For non-residents, yeah, non-residents, the only way a non-resident can, through our rules, is to come to Park and Rec between the hours of 7:30 and 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, to buy a day pass, which is $25 per person to get in.
One day.
One day.
And you put the date on there, so that person doesn't use it again?
They, they, well, the security is supposed to take this, it's a card, it's a, it's a break.
And how do you know they do collect them?
Well, they, they save them into the building, they save them for us, and give them back to us. So they're.
So they're not numbered? You couldn't tell me if you got them all back from last month or anything?
Can we, can we?
I don't think they're numbered.
I don't believe they're numbered, yeah.
I don't know that they take them all the time, but anyway, go ahead.
Okay. So they only can do that Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 and 4:00, and they only have two weeks to use them, I believe?
Seven days.
Seven days.
So there is a date?
Yeah, so they have seven days, they buy it, they have to use it within seven days, and we write it on there when it's, when they purchase it. Non-residents are not allowed to buy a season pass in the park, only residents can, and they have to show proof of residency, usually a couple forms of ID, car registration, and things like that. We will meet with our security company and review the rules, and make sure that they review them with their staff, so they know the rules inside and out.
And Dan, and one of the things that we talked about today is maybe have them sign an acknowledgement form, that they reviewed the, and acknowledged the rules and procedures of the park.
Yes. Yep. And when they hand out, there's, we, we still leave a stack of park policies at the gatehouse, so they can give them out to the residents, so they know, plus there's all the prices and everything is on the side of the building. Item number two is people entering the park and, you know, going back multiple times, that's not allowed. I think, once we re-educate our security company, and if we decide down the road to hire a park manager, that will be part of their duties also, to keep an eye on that type of thing.
So I come in with a few people, and I go.
Mm-hmm.
It's Saturday or Wednesday. I come back in my car with a few more people, I have my sticker. Is it just from memory that the person at the gate has to remember that I already came in?
Correct. And if you do that, they could, they'll make you leave, or they can, if it's severe, they could take you.
But it's up to them in their memory, there's no, we, I mean, I know I have a sticker, but there's no way for them to check how many times that sticker's come and gone.
So they're not logging the license plate number?
And Dan, one of the things that we talked about today is maybe have them sign an acknowledgement form that they reviewed the, and acknowledged the rules and procedures of the park?
Yes. Yep. And when they hand out, there's, we, we leave a stack of park policies at the gate house, so they can give them out to the residents, so they know. Plus, there's all the prices and everything is on the side of the building. Item number two is people entering the park and, you know, going back multiple times, that's not allowed. I think once we re-educate our security company and if we decide down the road to hire a park manager, that will be part of their duties also to keep an eye on that type of thing.
So I come in with a few people and I go, it's Saturday or Wednesday. I come back in my car with a few more people. I have my sticker. Is it just from memory that the person at the gate has to remember that I already came in?
Correct. And if you do that, they could, they'll make you leave, or they can, if it's severe, they could take your sticker.
But it's up to them in their memory. There's no, we, I mean, I know I have a sticker, but there's no way for them to check how many times that sticker's come and gone.
So they're not logging the license plate number?
No.
Well, something. I mean.
I mean, they go, um, to one of the grocery stores and go back by themselves, then that's not a problem.
Well, yes, I've gone, yeah, exactly. I've gone and left to get something and come back. But if the car comes in with three or four people as guests, so maybe that's something to think about. It'd be pretty easy just to have a clipboard. Maybe that goes back to the security company paying more attention for their money that we're paying maybe. I have to tell you, I never got a copy of rules when I, never, I mean, since I was probably, I don't know, 15. But they're supposed to hand it out, that was a long time ago. You're right, Mike. That was when I used to take my, my horse. They were building the lake.
They were building it.
They were building the lake.
You remember the fires?
I do. But, but there's no, I, I just think there's not consistency. So your item here about re-education, I think it's a lot, a lot more things involved there than we already have talked about. But you will take care of that.
Item number three, walk-ins. When someone walks into the park, they have to be a New Milford resident and they have to show proof of identification when they enter the park. If you don't have an identification, you're asked to leave. Minors are not allowed without being accompanied by an adult unless they have a school ID or something like that.
You ask a, a walk-in to show a driver's license or, or equivalent, okay.
Yes. So if it's a student, they'd have to show.
Counting two of them if I didn't have a car.
So if it's a student, they'd have to show, show their school ID or something like that.
What age is a minor? 18?
Yes.
What is it?
Yes, 18 is a minor.
18, okay.
Under 18.
Dan, can we, going back to the, the car loading?
Yes, number two.
Could we, could we put something in there as far as if they're caught doing that, that we can revoke their permit? Could we put that legalese in there?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have, we have.
So violation would mean you rescind your sticker and your right to go to the park?
Yeah. We have done that, but we'll make sure it's in the rules also. But we had taken people's stickers for that. Item number 16 in the rules. Yeah, if you look in the park regulations, on the first page, number 16.
I mean, we're letting the, the, the security staff know that they have that ability to, to do that through, through the park and rec?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Item number four is parking along the road. We kinda spoke with that. Would be, the mayor and I will be speaking with the police and traffic authority about additional signage and enforcement. Impossible, possible towing would be, I think, a, a big hindrance. They know their car might not be there when they get back. I think that's huge. Number five, people sneaking in the back entrance. We'll get a cost estimate on fencing. I have a feeling it's gonna be a large number. But if that doesn't work, I think having a park manager there also may hinder that. If he sees people coming through the woods, you know, that's another, another stopgap. But I think if we, with all the things together, with the signage, the police, police at the top of the road, ticketing people or towing, and a park ranger, I think that would stop a lot of it. Security not knowing the rules, we're gonna send up more copies of the rules. We're gonna meet with the owner of the security company and go through those.
So how much skin in the game do they really have? Do they understand that they're gonna lose the contract? They will terminate the contract if it doesn't improve? Have you given them any performance parameters about that?
I think he, we've had a conversation. I think he, he knows that right now, people aren't very happy with what happened, so.
Can you follow up in writing with that?
Sure.
I'd like, I'd like to see that they understand they're gonna lose the contract. It's not up to us to pay them $45,000 of the taxpayers' money and then have to manage it on top of that. Thank you.
Who is the security company?
R and R Security.
Where are they at?
I didn't know for.
How long have they been?
Twelve, I think. We, the mayor and I also talked about, had some additional coverage on holiday weekends to have, you know, possibly have another security guard there and the park, or the park manager to cover that. When there's people like that, when they're inundated.
What do we pay for the third person? You mentioned the.
It's an hourly rate. I think they're just above, I think it's like $11.
So they're getting like 13 some thousand dollars. They're there for three months, right?
Yes.
Okay. I've, I've been just thinking of this in terms of what it's costing us every day, every hour and what we're getting. And yeah, definitely, I think we need to step up the game here.
You said they're there 24 hours. They, what are the actual hours that people are allowed in the park?
Dawn to dusk.
Okay.
Other thing we want to address is pavilion. We wanna have some signage at the pavilion. So when people reserve the pavilion, other people that are using the park don't kinda swap and take their spot. So we're gonna have some signage saying, you know, this is, you know, it's reserved and your park privileges can be taken away if you break that rule. Also with boaters, I know we have some issues once in a while. We get some boaters there that drive by, say, hey, what a nice looking park. They'll pull up and see a, see a spot, somebody's out there on the lake. They'll sneak into their slip. It's another thing we will be working on. We have worked on it a lot. We have helped the boaters also. If they see somebody that's not supposed to be there, they let us know. And if they don't have a town sticker on their boat. So usually they get shooed out of there pretty fast.
Does the sticker, do they have a specific slot, a slip that each boater has?
Yeah, each.
So should their sticker number match their slip or does it work that way?
It doesn't work that way, but they, they each have their own spot and they each have a, a New Milford sticker. It's color coded for this boat slips. Then we had different color coding for people using the boat ramp also.
I mean, it seems like you should be able to have a numbered sticker for each spot, but it hasn't been promised on the bottom.
So that's something we can talk about. And then the other thing is noise. The Park and Rec Commission will bring up at their next meeting about having a policy about a noise regulation at the park. We're getting some.
Can, uh, we don't have a noise ordinance in New Milford. And I'm curious, we have two town attorneys here. Would that be allowed within the park?
Noise ordinance has to be a DEP, a DEP group ordinance.
Can we, like other towns, or any list, limit the decibels?
Yeah, you can, but it has to be.
We don't have, right.
The duels that I had to write as a Park and Rec Commission, ban electronic devices unless they're for medical reasons.
You mean that might be making noise?
Any kind of electronic devices.
But we don't have a noise ordinance, so I figure this is probably not really enforcement.
So we could work with the Park and Rec Commission as they're formulating that, correct?
That'd be a good way to do it.
I see Phil, but Phil's still thinking, I mean, it's something we can look at and get to horses. Just for the guests coming in, having, making sure they get a wristband. Cause if you, as Tom says, the security guards know that people are coming there on a regular basis. Well, if there's someone they don't know and they're not wearing a wristband, you could, they could come up and ask them, who are you with and are you a resident? If they're not, and, and if 10 people stand with Tom and say, well, how'd you all get here when you only got one car? I mean, it just seems, think if we sell a wristband for $2, $3, $4, whatever it is, for every guest that comes in a car, even if that car's a sticker, if it's not a resident, they have to buy it. The guest, that's, I mean, it's simple, especially since, as I said, people that aren't paying into the system are using our facilities and getting aware of terrorists, you know, it makes sense.
And Dan, could you also look, I know when I was there, some of the security guards were mentioning that if there's a high traffic, that some of the people will go right past the line and go right through the exit. Could you make notes in your rules and procedures if people are caught doing that, they'll immediately be banned from the park? Cause that's a major safety issue.
You mean driving, not walking?
Yep, driving, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
So they drive right through the exit?
They go around and they just go right through.
So are we looking into gates?
Are gates there?
Well, right now, we have, we have two entrance lanes. One's that, the first one, it's right next to the guard check. It's for people that need to buy stickers.
Yep.
The second one is just if you have your sticker ready, you can drive through slowly. You don't have to stop. And then the other one is an exit. That's how it's set up now. That's, we, when we renovated the park, we stood just before that, we just had two lanes, one in, one out. And the residents had asked that we put two in, so it's, so they have to wait lines so long.
And do the entrances have gates?
No.
So would that be that expensive to look into how expensive that is to put in? Be as long as we're doing it.
Would stop the drive-through?
Yeah.
Well.
That's the only way you're gonna stop that drive-through.
Would stop most of them.
Is anybody?
Can we just get a follow-up to this in a couple?
Yep.
Maybe the next meeting, so I know we have long attendance.
So there's no action? This is written up to, as a motion?
No, this is, no, this was just to update the council, but.
Right, but it was.
Park and Rec.
Had a motion and a second, so we have to withdraw that motion? And withdraw the second, Ms. Heaton?
Withdraw the second.
Then Dan, we'll touch base and I'll continue to apprise the council as we move forward. Thank you, Dan. Thank you to the commission coming tonight. Thank you. Next, Great Brook Road.
Item six, move that the town council initiate the process of discontinuing Great Brook Road pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 13A-49.
And Attorney Grimes, can you let the council know why we have this on our agenda for this evening?
At the behalf of the mayor, for the record, Matt Grimes, town attorney. The previous mayor's office received a letter, a petition from a resident dated August 7th, 2017, to discontinue actually a part of Great Brook Road. The, there's a lengthy process in the statute that Councilwoman Francis just referenced, that talks about the process to act on an application. Like, tonight's motion does not mean by any means you are approving discontinuance of the road or discontinue the continuance of the road, but an application of this nature has to be acted on within one calendar year. Needs to be started within one calendar year. So if you don't, the petitioner has the right to take the petition to the Superior Court and then the local body doesn't, doesn't get any say in it. So what happens now is there will be a posting at each end of the proposed discontinuance, saying what the application was and what the discontinuance would be. There would be a, some work by the Public Works Department, by the town engineer and town planner, to look into what discontinuance would be. There would be public hearings. Then the town council, which is the functional equivalent of the selecton, which is referenced in the statute, would make a recommendation to continue or to discontinue the road, or to recommend against the discontinuance. You do recommend the discontinuance. It would ultimately have to be acted on by a town meeting. And if it was turned down, people could petition to overrule the town council at a town meeting. So by passing this motion tonight, you are taking affirmative step on the application within the required one calendar year.
Why are we doing this? I need the backstory.
Resident petition.
Attorney Grimes.
What part of, what I just explained?
Very beginning, were they petitioned?
The petition.
So there was, there was a, there was a petition dated from a, from a resident private property owner, two private property owners in, that own the area surrounding it. It's no longer used. It's not, it's not a paved part of Great Brook Road. And they asked that it be discontinued so that they could have the use of their property. It's not a road that's traveled. And they, it was received, as I said, August 7th, 2017, and it was never acted upon.
By us doing this now, we're now in compliance. We're not saying we're closing the road, but because they initiated this last year in August.
August 7th, 2017.
August 7th, we have to, we have to acknowledge that. So that's what we're doing tonight.
So is this town-owned property that we're just?
It's private property.
It's private property.
But it's officially recognized as a town road.
Wait, it's my question. Are there any, I might get the terminology wrong. Do we get any town aid money? There's any, is there any grant money tied to this? There was a line item in the budget that said town aid for roads?
No.
Okay, so we don't need to worry about any revenue?
Correct.
Dropping off, okay.
I don't believe so.
I'm good.
Are we plowing this road? Doesn't exist.
No, doesn't really.
Doctor?
I think this has happened many times. There are just these roads that.
Don't get used.
Basically are wooded. I mean, you wouldn't know there's a road there. And then property owners turn around and say, could we just discontinue? I mean, it was a road 100 years ago. There's one right around the corner from me that, when someone pointed out, it took me a long time to picture a road being there. But this is kinda common.
I believe the last time the town actually officially did discontinue a road was in 2004. And many of the roads that were discontinued over the last several years in, in New Milford and the surrounding area, were roads that used to run through what is now Candlewood Lake and all of a sudden stopped at the lake when the lake was dug. So all of those roads, like the old Sherman Turnpike, stopped at a place in Brookfield and came out someplace in Danbury. So those roads were discontinued. So by initiating the process now, you are preventing the town from being taken to Superior Court by not acting with the more calendar years. Any other questions?
So any other discussion? All those in favor on the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Item seven, move that we allow for the temporary closure. This is a revised request, by the way. The original request is being changed to read as follows. They would like to allow temporary closure, this is the VNA of the Southern Crossover on Main Street, from noon on Thursday, August 2nd until noon on Saturday, August 4th, for the VNA's 100th anniversary party. The revised request allows for setup on Thursday, breakdown on Sunday. The revised request was approved by the traffic authority on the 26th of June, 2018. And the verbiage below from the traffic authority is, and its motion and its passing is noted.
Any discussion?
You said you're on Saturday, you said you're on Sunday, you said you're on Saturday.
Breakdown on Saturday. Did I sound sorry?
They really need that much time? That's a, that's a lot of locality. I mean, I know when I do the taste of New Milford, if there's anything there that next morning, I'm in trouble. And, you know, so we make sure it gets cleaned up. It just seems, seems like they're asking for a lot more than we need to ask for.
Didn't anybody talk to the businesses about this?
What's the center part, right?
It's just the crossover part that's closed. It's about maybe eight, yeah, eight spaces, seven spaces in the police spot.
On a Saturday morning when farmer's market's going, yeah?
No, that's up at north. But it's still, you didn't know that well.
Well, the alternative to not allowing them to have the road closed, is they won't be able to get everything set up and taken down, so I suppose.
In theory.
They're expecting a large group of people for this 100th anniversary party.
Is there anyone here, I see it's from the VNA?
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next, grants and compliance.
Can I, as a comment, when people are asking for something, coming for counsel, you know, I know that when I, you do it for the case, you know, but I will be here, I'm here anyway. But representatives should be here so we can ask them questions. And the VNA doesn't seem to, seem to ever be here for these things, including when we're talking about them in the budget as well.
Yep.
Yes, we, we should request it. Not just from them, but a lot of.
Anyone, I mean, how can I ask a question about why they need so much time if they're not here to ask that question?
Dan?
Good evening, members of the council. Tammy Reardon. I'm your grant writer and compliance specialist. My request that I put forward to the mayor to go on the agenda tonight is for authorization of a grant program that will be run through the New Milford Senior Center. It's the Innovations in Nutrition Program and Services Grant that is being offered by the Administration on Aging, Division of the Administration for Community Living. What that really means is there is a grant opportunity that is due the 17th of July, which is very fast and furious for me and my schedule, but I can tackle that. However, I do need authorization from you, authorizing Mayor Bass to sign the grant application documents as well as any other supplemental information he may need to provide with this grant application. The program itself that we're looking at doing is actually localizing the Congregate Meal Program that our senior center now offers. So our Congregate Meal Program at the senior center operates Monday through Thursday. It serves about 40 meals a day. And it's come out of a regional location. The meals are cooked somewhere else and brought in. At the senior center, we have a heat and eat kitchen, not a commercial kitchen. So we are looking at changing that and providing more nutritious, more flavorful meals to our seniors with the expectation that instead of Monday through Thursday, we will be operable with fresh food meals for them Monday through Friday. And we expect, based on projections that I've worked with Carolyn Haglen, the senior center with, that number of meals to go from 40 meals a day to 60 meals a day. So what that does is that engages more of our senior population here in New Milford into the New Milford Senior Center, provides them with a more delicious and nutritious meal. meal, because part of this program does require that a registered dietitian be onboard. We do have the benefit of Carolyn Haglen being a registered dietitian, so we don't need to contract that out. And this program would be a pilot program for the moves. There is up to five hundred thousand dollars available to do this. It is a seventy-five percent coverage program. We would be responsible for twenty-five percent of the total program cost. However, our in-kind contributions, as well as cash contributions, can make up that twenty-five percent. So we do not anticipate additional costs to the taxpayer, because some of the services we are already providing, we will roll into this program as a whole, as well as we have the ability to include the donations that we receive from our seniors who partake in the lunch program.
Does anybody have a question?
Mike, how much do you think you're gonna have to, how much is the grant you're applying for and how much would be twenty-five percent, I guess? Do you know how about?
The maximum grant award is five hundred thousand dollars. Based on some of the preliminary, and again, very preliminary budget numbers that Carolyn and I were working with last week, we are probably looking at a program cost close to about four hundred thousand dollars.
So you gotta raise one hundred and twenty-five thousand or?
Not even, it would be about a hundred thousand dollars. If the total program cost was four hundred thousand, I'd be asking for three hundred thousand from the grant. We would be responsible for the other hundred thousand. Again, that's just a really rough estimate, but some of the things that can be included towards that cash match is a portion of Carolyn's salary based on the time that she spends putting this program together. The cash contributions that actually come from our seniors, there's a recommended donation, they're not required to pay it, but it's a recommended donation. We can use that as well to make up some of the twenty-five percent difference, as well as the time and space that's available at the new senior center expansion.
As, as a comment, new space, so I've heard Carolyn, I'm sure you can support it, that the meals you've been getting, busting or not where they need to be. And so I, I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, thank you. I think another benefit, which the, the community as a whole will see, is that bringing this congregate meal service in locally is going to provide an opportunity for local suppliers and vendors.
Any other discussion?
Move that the resolution, as I will read, be accepted. Be resolved that Pete Bass, mayor of the town of New Milford, is authorized to sign and apply for two thousand eighteen Innovations in Nutrition Program and Services Grant offered by the Administration on Aging, Division of the Administration for Community Living. On behalf of the town, Mayor Bass is also authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant, should the town be selected for the grant award.
Second. Any other discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Tammy, the next, the next one?
There you go. So the next one, very similar story as to the reason why I'm here, without a lot of detail for you. This grant is offered by the U.S. Department of Justice through their cops division. It's called the School Violence Prevention Program. And it is also a two-year grant, valued at up to five hundred thousand dollars. The municipality is eligible as an applicant, the Board of Education is not. But what they are looking for here is partnership between the municipality, the police department specifically, as well as the school systems. They encourage partnerships with the school system. So when I found this opportunity, literally about seven days ago, with a grant deadline of the thirtieth of July, I jumped right on it and met with Kevin Moret, head of facilities for the Board of Education, because our superintendent was away for that week. And also with me was the chief of police, Sean Boyne. We reviewed some of the grant documents to see if there was a program that is going to increase our school security without extenuating constraints, given the short timeframe for this grant application. So without giving away the details of our school security, which would be inappropriate, what I can tell you is this grant would increase our security presence in all of the schools, add a layer of protection to the security measures we already have in place. It will also add, as the mayor referred to it, boots on the ground. So it's staff, not equipment, not technology. The buzzers on the doors, the security systems that are already in place, we have. I was assured by Kevin Moret that those are very sufficient in terms of the technology and the ability for the schools to control them. The issue with the technology that's there is similar to what was going on with Lindemay Park, people tend to sneak around the rules. So, but increase staff in the form of what we determine to be campus safety coordinators. And they would develop a campus safety protocol and program for each of the five schools we have here in the system. Over the two years, I would expect this to be five hundred thousand dollars in a grant application, based on some of the preliminary conversations we've had. It also is a seventy-five percent program coverage. So if I apply for five hundred thousand dollars, the town's responsibility would be a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on top of that. So that would be a total program of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars must be a cash match. It has to be non-federal dollars. So what that means is if I need a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to round out that program, there's nothing stopping me from seeking other private funding sources to make that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars up, as opposed to just strictly taxpayer dollars.
Any questions, Mike?
Yeah, and because it's municipality, Renan, so to speak, to the municipality, we can't pass that one twenty-five on to the board of ed.
There's nothing that says we couldn't do that, if necessary. It is a partnership. The Board of Education is not allowed to be the applicant or the grantee. The town has to be the applicant and the grantee.
Mike?
I mean, I think it's a good idea, my only worry is after two years, we have, we only have, you gotta come up with four hundred thousand dollars, whatever it is, or get rid of employees, so that's the only.
So one of the things that we did talk about with the chief and with our board of ed partners is we currently have an expense for our security now. If this is something that is workable and doable, there may be right sizing that security force to help offset most of those costs that would be now borne with this new security measure.
That doesn't mean that we can't go after another grant.
Correct.
Correct. The grant, this is actually very fast in terms of the deadline. The deadline is the thirtieth of July, which is super fast. One thing I was very surprised to learn about this grant program being run through a federal agency is we will have notice of grant awards by the thirtieth of September. Very quick program, so something we can implement, I would imagine, easily for the second half of the school year, if not before.
And just to kind of reiterate for everyone, so we have been speaking to our board of education partners, our superintendent, Josh Smith, they are on, he is on board with us going for this grant.
Yes.
Any other, any other discussion?
Okay, a move to accept the following resolution. Be it resolved that Pete Bass, mayor of the town of New Milford, is authorized to sign and apply for two thousand eighteen U.S. Department of Justice Cops School Violence Prevention Program, SVVP, grant on behalf of the town. Mayor Bass is also authorized to act on behalf of the town, enter in and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant, should the town be selected for the grant award.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten.
Next, this presentation.
Oh, you wanted to present before?
So Seamus is gonna come up and present.
Sorry, Seamus didn't jump in.
Trailhead and then boat launch. And one of the things I'd like to do first of all, Seamus, is thank you for walking all these, all these trails and putting them on, and he's gonna talk about. And I think by listing this and bringing this forward, I think this is one of the steps when we're looking at revitalization and bringing people into town. I think using our natural resources is definitely one of our tools that we can use. And this is gonna be a part, part of, part of this.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Bass, excuse me, Mayor Bass asked me to share two projects that I've been working on sort of on the side, a little bit for myself, some of it through the hiking trails commission, but I'm continuing on with this, this particular piece of it. And I've been working on, really working on something that I view as enhancing and sharing, two of those valuable assets are trails on the river. I moved to New Milford eleven years ago and promptly set out to find places to walk my dogs. Lots of land trust. I live in, on North Road, or off of North Road, on Arcadia Lane. We've got a lot of land trust, but there were very few hiking trails and absolutely no information on the trails in New Milford. Since I came from Roxbury, I was very familiar with the Roxbury Land Trust and the maps that they handed out that were made available. They've got, they've got their trail maps online. Matter of fact, Weon Hogg, I dare Weon Hogg walks, but that covers all of Litchfield County, so it really is very minimal representation of New Milford. And then Kent just came out with a wonderful book, hand-drawn maps by an eighty-year-old retired architect. Beautiful. New Milford has nothing. That disturbs me. Truth is, as I've discovered, we have over thirty-five miles of hiking trails in New Milford. They're beautiful, very different. Some are through pastures, others are going up Candlewood Mountain, Berry Hill, Mount Tom. So they do exist, but there's no documentation, nothing, nowhere. Weon Hogg has a few of them, but when I've gone back and asked about whether I could hike here, the answer is no, we really have, it's not really open at this point. So it's really been trying to talk to people, and all the people have said, gee, if you ever tried this trail, I'd go off and take a hike and map it while I'm doing it. My plan is to make this available on the town website. Mayor Bass and I have talked about this, what I'm showing you tonight is the first cut of what we're doing. And we've broken it down into trailheads. And if you can see on your maps or on this map, we've come up with specific trailheads which just try to capture those trails in a specific area. Taking a look at a map like this and trying to put all the trails start to finish would be a mess, you would have a tough time reading it. And I might add, I am working right now with a member of the Dartmouth College Geography Department faculty to help put these maps together. So I'm getting some outside help on it. And Lisa, I've been asked by people on your new equestrian committee if I would help them with their maps of horse trails. I'll set that on the side because we really haven't gotten into it to the extent I'd like to. So this is my first project that I'm gonna talk to you about. When we're ready to go live, I will work with Dan Calhoun and the IT people, and we're gonna get it up on the town website.
And one of the things for, so the council can kind of picture and imagine in a way, right? So we're trying to leverage all different type of components to bring additional economic development into our town. One of our assets that we have that no one else has is our, is how our beauty, is our natural resources are unique to us. So imagine somebody, a millennial in Stanford, right? I wanna go do something tonight. I wanna go do something today. So he's gonna go on his PDA and look around. So low and behold, wow, New Milford has all these trails I can go walk on. Pretty amazing. I can also go, as he's gonna, Seamus is gonna talk about in a minute, I can go kayaking. I can do a whole host of things we can do recreationally that puts us on the map, that brings extra vitality to our town. So Seamus, I can't thank you enough for beginning this process and sorry for jumping in. I apologize.
Two years ago, and I'll just pick up from there, two years ago, I had the opportunity to kayak the Old Husaton River from the source up in Washington, Massachusetts, on Muddy Pond, all the way to Long Island Sound. Day one, we crossed thirty-one beaver dams. But that really isn't the point. One of the things I observed coming down the river is that New Milford has, bar none, the best waterfront, Husaton River of any town in Massachusetts or Connecticut. That makes it a real asset. It's an asset that I think has been underutilized, but with the, with the creation development of, say, the Meadows Park and with now the Yums Field Riverfront Park, we have taken that a long way. And I applaud the people who were involved in that, making that happen, because I think that makes it a real asset, but there's more work to be done on it. If someone wanted to know, and we kind of touched on this in the prior discussion with Parks and Rec, that if somebody wanted to come to town and paddle on the Husaton River, how would they know where to launch or where to even park their car? By doing nothing, we've made it difficult. And if Addis Park is where they're gonna go and see the sign that says you gotta have a parking permit, they may turn around and leave. And I don't think that's what, what we want. So my hope, and what we've done is we've put yellow on this page and there, I don't know when it came out on the copies, but we've put boat launches, we've put portages. The one portage that hasn't been added yet is the Still River Falls Portage that HVA is working on. But we've put all of that in there. But I also wanna put in, under each of those, and maybe, let me pause for a minute. Each of these sites are, we're calling trailheads. Trailhead will have a series of maps, and you've got a couple of them in your package, just as an example. But they've got a series of maps, so Mount Tom has, really has two trailheads. One's the Pratt Center, the other is Mount Tom Road. Then you can stop and have a beer with Pete after you're done. We're doing the same for the, we're doing the same for the boat launches. Where can you park? Where do you put it? Where is the put-in? It gets really, it gets difficult. I put together a year ago the flotilla for the opening ceremony of the, of the riverfront park, the Yums Field Riverfront Park. And it really meant reaching out to a lot of people, many of whom I didn't know, to try to get them to come out, whether they were in a kayak or canoe, or on a paddleboard, or somebody even had their child pulled behind in a rubber raft. The question that everybody, almost everybody asked was, where can I park my car so I don't get a parking ticket? I gotta put that information out there. Those are questions people are gonna ask. We have six launches between Gaylord's, Lil' Dona on the river. I've also added Lindemay Park, oh, Candlewood, Candlewood Lake, and we have a boat launch on the Still River, as well as Reservoir Park. I don't know about all of you, but I didn't know about Reservoir Park. And I went down there with my wife to check out the boat launch, the trail around. Two bald eagles flying around it. It's spectacular. And if you haven't gone up and looked at it, there's another asset in the town that I'll bet a lot of people don't know about. So enough of that. So enough of that. Second project, and I again spoke to Mayor Bass about, deals with accessibility, making the town's boat launch more accessible to all paddlers. A year ago, we installed a dock at the Yumsfield Riverfront as an alternative to the often very mudding ramp. And when I say very muddy, if you haven't been down there in the spring, you can find a good foot plus of mud that you have to walk through to get in your boat, then get out of your boat, and then as you drag your boat up to put on the roof of your car, it's a day that didn't end well. Actually, the fishermen love it. And I was down there today just to actually to measure the height of the dock. And I asked the young lady from Clark Outdoors if they used the dock or did they use the ramp. She said they've been told to tell all boaters to use the ramp, that the dock is for fishermen. I hope that's not true. Because, but having said that, that dock is not a good dock for kayakers. Tried it once, and once is enough for me. I can only assume that as a casual observer, I might have resembled a tuna being landed on a dock, sort of flopping around, trying to get out of my boat, holding the boat so the current doesn't take it away, and then finally pulling it out. I'm not going to do that again. And it sort of saddens me that we went ahead with this approach. We put the dock in, and you know, I like to kayak. I actually want to learn how to paddleboard, but I'm not going to go down and rent the paddleboard if I have to walk through a foot of mud going in and coming back and then carry that into my car. It's a challenge for anyone, and I'm a few months shy of turning 68. I don't like to play this card. But what we created, excuse me, what we created is not senior friendly. And on top of that, I know a number of women, my wife among them, who are not thrilled with the idea of walking through mud or trying to struggle to get up on the dock. So I've spoken to the people that we, Dan was there, I guess he left, that we use for the dock. And they have something that's known as a yak port, which can be attached to the dock. I went up to Stockbridge last fall at the invitation of the HVA office up there. And Stockbridge just purchased a phenomenal dock with rollers that you can get in your boat on dry land, roll your boat down into the water, and paddle away, and then come back and pull yourself up the rollers and get out of your boat on dry land. Really was excellent, and it's a state-of-the-art dock for kayakers. That's where I think we ought to go. I've looked into this one. Our cost would be $1,906 and a few cents, or cover the cents. And that's installed. And they're ready to do it. So that's really the request I have on the second project that I'm looking at. Because I think if we could make New Milford a place that people would want to roll in and put their boats in, yes, they still have to go, if they want to head south, they have to go across the dam or around the dam. The portage at Harry Brook Park isn't that bad, or Harry Brook, or not, sorry, not Harry Brook, Hidden Meadows, Hidden Treasures, isn't that bad. I did that several years ago, but it would make a phenomenal place to put in and then come back. If I've put in up in Gaylord'sville or Gordman Bridge and then go back there, I'll probably leave town if I'm not from New Milford. If I come back to town, I might just go up and get a beer. Something kayakers like to do. So that's the second part. I think, and I'm going to come back to this, the heart of this goes really to what I look at is economic development. I am on the Economic Development Commission. We do want people to, and I'll quote this, "work, play, and stay." And if you look, those are the first three words on the New Milford website. Do you think we're doing that today? We could do better. Thank you.
I have a question. So I've seen something similar to this yak port. This would still allow people to fish off the other sides, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Depends where their lines are. I mean, if boats come down and somebody's got a line out, you know, we're patient people. I mean, we could wait for them to reel it in, but we're not going to sit there and wait till they catch fish.
Right. But I'm just saying, no, I mean, that would be common courtesy. Just what having this on the dock that's there wouldn't stop anybody from being able to fish if they wanted to.
No. No. Because this really is, it's separate.
Yeah.
It's at, the bottom of it's at water level, so you just paddle in. And now you're, unless somebody's trying to cast over your head down the shore, it probably, probably won't be. But I don't see, there's always going to be exceptions.
Of course.
But I don't see that.
Well, that would happen now.
Well, now it's a question of where do I go? Do I go upstream or do I go downstream? Or do I go to the end of the dock?
There's not that many people fishing there.
Mike? Yeah. Thank you, Seamus, for all you do in mapping out the trails. I think that's a wonderful idea. My wife is just getting into this, so I'm going to share this. Couple of things. Who owns the trails? Is that like utilities, or is that the town, or is it trusts, or?
Some of them are town, some of them are land trust. So Sunny Valley, Nature Conservancy. Vonsnet, power company. What I call the Houston River Range Trails, but really also known as the Blue Trail. And Candlewood Mountain. I have no idea. Part of it is Weon Hogg, around the Torres Cave, what's known as the...
Kelly's Slide.
Well, that is a good, at least a good point. I am not putting Kelly's Slide in there. I went up, and I, it's not a place I'd recommend my kids to go, and therefore I don't think that my dog, it's a Labrador Retriever, couldn't make it through there.
So going on that, Weon Hogg, as far as I know, they don't particularly care for people to be on their land. Is that true?
On their lands, but Weon Hogg has a number of trails. So the trail going up Mount Tom, the orange trail is, I think the orange trail is Weon Hogg. So it's sort of a combination. It's just a couple of trails from Mount Tom Road. I think if somebody wanted to, I've always talked about Weon Hogg doing a trail that went from Mount Tom down to the Smersky Farm and along below where the cattle are, sort of over by the ridge. If they create a trail, then that's fine. And I've, I work very closely, I do a lot of volunteering with Weon Hogg, so that before anything goes out, I'll certainly have that discussion with, I mean, I've had the discussion with Kathy Rosson already, and I will have the discussion on this other trail, because that's one that may rear its head as something that the equestrian community might want to use.
So the answer is, is if Weon Hogg owns the land and it's on the trail, then walkers are welcome. But if it's not, if it's an open field, you can't just go frolic through the flowers, so to speak.
Right. And Leva, you can attest to this, because when I started looking at this 11 years ago, Leva was with Weon Hogg, and I asked, where can I walk my dogs? And at the time, Weon Hogg didn't want people taking dogs on their trails. That has eased.
Well, the consultation may have true at the time.
Well, that one has eased, and Weon Hogg doesn't necessarily want horses on their trails. But...
We're getting there.
We're getting there. And what we learned a few weeks ago at one of the equestrian meetings was that the state, Lover's Lake, all those trails in Lover's Lake, if you can hike them, you can ride them. And that's the state's law.
Just one more question. With the yak port, I think it's a great idea. First of all, after serving with the Rotary for 20, who was doing, chasing ducks and getting stuck in the mud and having it up to my...
This will make it so much easier.
Oh, yeah. Can a canoe be launched, so to speak, from this yak port?
Yes.
So it serves both canoe and kayak?
Yeah, and paddleboard.
Wonderful idea. I'm all in favor.
Thank you.
Doctor?
Stockbridge has one of these in place.
Not the same manufacturer. There's something that's done by a group called the Dock Doctor. A little different. We took a look at it. The biggest concern that I had was if I went with that, linking that up to the dock we already have would be difficult. The dock that was put in, which is, you've got the date in here somewhere, but very modular. So it's almost, you know, four more bolts and it's attached. And that was part of the arrangement, is it would be delivered and installed by the company.
All right. So the point I was getting at, during the winter, they take it out?
Yep.
How many months is it out?
I don't know how many months it's out, but I'm sure it's out until April at least.
Do you know if there are public works or Park and Rec deals with the maintenance of it and taking it out and putting it back in?
I don't. Good question.
So in other words, you know, we've cut back work or some Park and Rec, and if you're going to add another job to them, you know, something to consider. And we need a place to store it also.
Right. It has to go someplace, that's for sure.
Mike?
Dan would have known that. I know he was here, but this is here in Austin. I'll find out.
Now, my point is, I love the idea. I love kayaking. I hiked two kayaks up at Lindemming for the summer. It's a great sport and all that, but there's things that have to be dealt with. The maintenance of it, the storage of it, who's putting it in, who's taking it out, you know? Let's make sure we have everything covered when we do this. And don't just hand another job to Park and Rec and say, well, do it even though we cut you this past year, you know? Thank you.
I would want Dan to find out.
So right now, the current boat launch that goes down, does it go far enough so that you can't really get, or does it stop at water's edge?
Have you ever walked down it? It's dirt, it's mud, it's ridiculous.
It goes down far enough. When the water's high, you can paddle in a little farther, but when the water drops down, it's mud.
And we can't extend that out, or just without?
I don't think it's a question of extending it. I think it's a question of when you get to the shallow part where you're going to want to get out of your boat, you're in the mud.
Is it part of it that it's really ideally on the wrong side of the river? It's on the side that the silt's always going to flow that way? And it's a little spot.
The silt is like this, even if they clean it out, which is done.
Michael knows, he's had his money times.
That's why I was asking, didn't I? The other question, so the company that's there right now and you can rent boats from, have they been getting a lot of usage, or?
My understanding is they're roughly at a break-even point, and that was their experience last year, which was their first year doing it.
So they'd like to get this thing put in because it would hopefully make it more enjoyable?
So Mike, to answer your question, I went down there and I talked to the lady that was there, and she expressed that there was people that were not, had actually turned around because of the mud issue, and were just like, I don't... And she felt there would be a definite, by putting the port in, there'd definitely be an increase in the usage.
Just going back to the trails that you were talking about, I think it's phenomenal to work with Park and Rec and get an IT, and maybe like a link or something when you go to Park and Rec, because a lot of people don't know how long the trails are, how big they are, and so forth. I think that'd be an awesome idea, if somebody came into town and clicked the link and they saw all these trails that they could go to. On the yak port, it'd be connected to the dock that's there, correct?
Yes.
That dock gets taken out anyway, correct?
Yeah.
So that would just be coming out with the yak port as well? The dock being taken out as well?
I think there are four bolts attaching to that dock.
So we're not talking about streaming more amount of time.
Who's responsible for removing the dock?
It's Parks and Recreation.
Is this it?
Yes.
And where do they put the dock? Where do they put it?
I don't know where they store it, but it took five people to get the other one out at the end of the season. So I don't know what's involved with that.
I don't know if it goes up to, does it go up to back to Lindemming? Do they bring it to Lindemming, or are they bringing it up to the stream?
I don't know where they store the dock.
Yeah, I have to check in yet, but I know the dock itself. The dock itself has it, so it's just an add-on.
I talked to Dan Calhoun, I didn't ask him that question, but we've talked about this. Here's their motion support.
Lisa?
Thank you, Seamus. This is amazing. I appreciate all the effort that went into this. Is this a true statement? Do we have the most trail miles of any town in the northwest corner of Connecticut?
I couldn't say that definitively.
Who might have more than us? I'm just trying to think about how to put it on any of our pages and position it so that people come to us first.
Well, let me put it a little differently. I would expect if you started with Kent, for instance, if you started adding up land trust trails, Weon Hogg's got a number of them, the Kent Land Trust has got some, there's some Nature Conservancy trails up there, and then you add in Macedonia State Park.
Okay.
They give us a good run for our money. I don't know.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Shall we table this until we have more information?
Was this something you wanted to get in this summer? Is this something you want to get in this summer?
We, we don't know who's going to handle it.
I'd love to get it in as soon as we can.
And once we say yes, how long will it take?
Right. But Seamus, I think, as was brought up, we do need to know who is going to remove it? What's the time and staff cost for that? Where will it be stored and who will take care of it?
I'll get that information.
Yeah, I don't think that's any reason to table this, though. If I'm frank, I've come out of that thing up to my knees, and mud is filthy.
Well, we'll do a motion and see what goes.
And more and more people would like to use that down there. And I mean, listen, that original portage was not designed properly. All right? It just wasn't. But we're all paying the penalty for that now. Let's put this thing in and do it quickly. I'm 100% in favor of this. I'm ready to roll.
I'm satisfied with the answer that Doug had, that we have to pull up the dock anyway. So it's not like we're adding an entirely new function, it's just one new piece.
Putting it on the main dock, lifting up the catwalk, and the whole thing comes out on one knee.
Very good to go.
My only concern, and I'm not making any vote against this, but you know, we're, we kind of look at landfill settlement as this ever-ending, never-ending pot of money. And you know, there's two things on the agenda today that are taking money out of it, so we just have to, I don't know, it's just something we want to be cognizant of, and I don't know if that's something we'd be in a separate committee for, is say, you know, do people have to apply to take money out of it, just like we're doing with other things? I'm just making a suggestion, I'm just making a comment that, you know...
So at our next meeting, at our next town council meeting, we'll give you an updated amount that's in the landfill settlement fund, plus the update of when we're going to be receiving our next payment in the landfill settlement.
All right. I'd like to move that we expend $1,906.41 from the landfill settlement fund or any fund deemed appropriate by the acting director of Finance for a kayak, canoe, yak port.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Seamus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm 11.
Personnel, Mr. Bolero, can you come up, please?
So we're going to talk about it before we go. Oh, seriously. You need to tell it. I don't know. Okay. So this evening, we've got two job descriptions on the agenda for updating, the first being the Health Director. This update, it's not a lot of substantial responsibility change as much as it is, it just gives a lot more accountability. We worked through the job descriptions subcommittee to update the language on this recommendation with that committee.
I'd like to thank the jobs subcommittee for reviewing the Health, the Health Director position and the Town Planner, Sewing Enforcement Officer as well. Does anybody have any questions concerning the first one, which is the Health Director? Sorry, Doc.
Could you just say a couple of things that were changed?
Yeah. So if you look at the format of the job descriptions, it's been completely reformatted. Also, language, it went from general duties and responsibilities to the Health Department to a central job duties. Your first bullet point, review registry of vital statistics, demographics to assess, determine the health needs. Review and analyze health data, statistics, demographic information to assess and to Review and analyze health data, statistics, demographic information to assess and determine the health needs of the community. So again, it's just language that really better defines what the job responsibilities are. As you go through some of the things that were added, assign work supervising coordinating inspections and investigation affecting filth and public nuisance, public health and/or environmental pollution, including drinking water quality, subsurface sewage disposal systems, food service establishments, swimming pools and bathing areas, housing, daycare centers, schools, camps and other facilities. It's just better defining what the old job description entailed.
But we're not defining it or changing it because Mike Kressman's going anywhere, right?
No, but Mike Kressman did just eclipse his 30 years here with the town. So it's just better preparing ourselves in case of eventual departure.
I can't say enough about Mike. He does a great job.
He's fantastic. True way player for the town.
Any other discussion?
Second, oh, sorry.
I'd like to move the acceptance of the revised job description from the subcommittee to accept the updated job description of the health director.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to move on to the next one, or are you going to discuss it?
Yep.
I'd like to move to accept the recommendation of the job description subcommittee and accept the job description of the revised job description of town planner and zoning enforcement officer.
Second.
Does anybody have any discussion? Dr. Malone?
So it says here, town planner, land use supervisor, CEO, which is different than what it says here. Than what the motion is. So which is it? Is the land use supervisor?
Supervisor was left out of the agenda.
Can we amend that?
Do you want to amend it?
Yes, I will. I'll amend it. I didn't realize it. So we're going to amend that motion to accept the recommendation from the job subcommittee for the town planner, land use supervisor slash zoning enforcement officer.
So this is now one person's job. Previously, it was three people's jobs.
Yes, sir.
A little correction, it was really two people's jobs.
Yep.
So this is Kathy Casametta's old position and Laura Regan's old position. Laura Regan's position was the land use supervisor slash zoning enforcement officer, and it combines the responsibilities of the town planner. But just so the council knows, this is a role that Laura had really done in years past before we brought Kathy on board. So it's really just...
Well, it was interesting because when Kathy's job was being discussed during budget season, person after person came up to speak how wonderful she did her job. It's not what we're asking one person to do two jobs, so I'm not in favor of this.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you to the job description.
Thank you. Next is charter revision, discussion of possible action regarding feedback. This is to keep us on track with our charter revision timeline. Attorney Grimes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, again. Town attorney Matt Grimes, also clerk and procedural advisor to the Charter Revision Commission. The charter revision statutes are some of the most complicated in chapter seven. So where you are at this point is the commission has submitted its draft report to the clerk of the municipality, who has then transferred it to you as the town council. The public hearing that the town council held on the charter revision closed on June 25th, which was the same day of your last council meeting. According to CGS 7-191, section B, not later than 15 days after its last hearing, which was the 25th, the appointing authority, which is the town council, shall make recommendations for such changes in the draft report as deemed desirable. So what you as a council have the option to do by the 15th day, which is tomorrow, is vote as a council to recommend, to the commission, recommend, not binding, any changes that you may have to the draft report. If the town council passes no motions tonight or tomorrow, if it was a special meeting, on the draft report, then the draft report of the Charter Revision Commission becomes the final draft, and then at your August meeting, you would consider those changes which you as a council could delete from, you could not add to. So again, if you're going to make any motions for feedback to the Charter Revision Commission, then they will reconvene between now and the next town council meeting. If not, as I said, if there's no motion passed, if you have no recommendations to change to the draft report, then this will become the final draft and you'll have the opportunity to take up the draft, whether it's revised or whether it's this version, at your next meeting.
So what you're saying is that regardless of what we say, feedback motion or not, when the final draft comes back to us, we still have the option to say we want this or don't want that, or make our comments?
You can delete from the final draft.
You can't add to it.
You cannot add to it.
And so if we wanted to add to it, the feedback has to be given this evening or at a special meeting tomorrow, and the Charter Revision Committee would then have to meet to add that in in order to bring it back to us for our August meeting?
That's right. All you can recommend is that they consider. You cannot direct the commission what to do. I mean, they can meet, they say, "Okay, council, we looked at your suggestion and we do recommend that change for X, Y and Z", or we don't recommend that change for X, Y and Z. That's something that would come back at the August meeting.
And Attorney Grimes, if you could let the council know, as you have, how many meetings approximately that they have already had, the Charter Revision Committee, for input?
I would say there's been public comment at every meeting and, let me say, GM, this is from her here. We've had probably 12 to 15 meetings since the end of February.
Thank you.
And including three public hearings.
And thank you to the Charter Revision Subcommittee for all their work so far. Excellent. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Next, fair housing policy.
Move to accept the resolution authorizing Mayor Pete Bass to sign the fair housing policy and affix the town seal.
Second.
Any discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Number 14, softball dugouts. Move to expend $7,800 from the landfill settlement fund or any fund deemed appropriate by the acting director of finance for dugouts at Sarah Noble Intermediate School for the girls' softball fields.
So these are the fields...
Just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you. So these are fields that are at Sarah Noble School. As of right now, the fields utilization committee has been meeting. One of the things is currently, as far as a game field, there really is only one, and that would be the girls' field, as Doug knows, that would be on the Grellik Farm field. That particular portion of the organization is tending to grow and looking to grow, and to need to do that, you need to accommodate that with some better fields. This weekend is going to be their districts, which New Milford actually is going to be hosting this year, first time. You're looking at about 400 to 500 families coming into town, looking to, when they're here, they got to eat, they got to buy gas, they got to shop here. They can see how wonderful our town is, how we're very community-minded and very supportive of our youth sports. So I would like to make the recommendation that we move forward, complete the project that we started. We already have the fields up and running. According to Mr. Beebe, now we just need to get the proper dugouts so that our kids, A, are safe and we can be compliant.
Question? So will these be done in time for the tournament? It sounds like no.
No. But moving forward, they'll be able to, and that'll also help us when we're looking to host additional events. I was hoping to, that we could get to this earlier, but we could not.
Okay.
Who will do this dugout creation?
So it's going to be part volunteer and part, I believe it's, I believe it's ONG that was helping them out as well. But it'd be the same vendor that was working with them prior to. And a lot of this work is done by, as everyone knows, when they do their volunteer work, already done by the volunteers.
The same ones that I see at Garrett Farm?
Correct.
Getting the fields ready for this upcoming?
And I'm 100% in favor of this. A lot of the youth that are in this town are private organizations and they sustain the costs themselves. And as Pete Merritt stated earlier in his remarks, the youth organizations in this town, both girls and boys, have exceeded from 10 years ago when I first started coaching. It was more of an after fact to get into districts and states and regionals. And they're going to be hosting the regionals this weekend. And again, Pete mentioned, the mayor, there'll be a lot of families here. And they're going to add a lot of economic stuff here. And we need to, the girls have been phenomenal the last few years playing. And the boys, for some reason, have more fields than the girls, and we need to step up as a community and give them a little bit more. And I know the contractors that donate a lot of time, they put a lot of fill-in already up there in the clay, and this is a much-needed for our youth organization, so 100% in favor.
Pete, can I just make one quick comment?
Sure, Doc.
Remember, this is a safety factor. You know, this is just not, this is not for her condition dugouts. This is to protect the girls from the ball gets bowled or gets, you know, gets tipped off. A lot of kids get hurt on the sidelines, so we can deal with that.
And this is, there is no dugout right now.
That's right.
So this is adding something to it. It's not like we're making it more better than it was removed years ago when the fields were there, and that, they just overgrew, finally, the need for it, so.
Yeah, I mentioned it to Pete earlier. My only concern is the field utilization. Subcommittee hasn't given us a full report, and I just want to make sure that this field is going to be used for softball and it's not, we're not going to put money into something that they're going to make recommendations to change. Because that did used to be soccer that that was used for over there.
I believe that where the two are located is far away from the soccer field.
No, I know, I know, but we used to have soccer. I mean, it was, it was different at one point. It wasn't always used for softball, and then they reclaimed it back.
Right.
So I just wanted to make sure that that's part of their long-term plan before we spend money on it.
Is that part of their charter? The facilities utilization committee is looking at the ball fields?
The field utilization.
There's a, there's a field.
Field utilization.
Yep, it's a different. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
You go, girls. Item 15, reappointment of the library modernization and construction committee. All members serving July 9th, 2018, and January 9th, 2019. Members Catherine A. Francis, Michael P. Gold, Joyce Hermanot, Jen Lucava, John Oxton, Joanne Chapin, David Elmore, Paul Partalo and Jennifer Lepari.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Now, the community center committee.
And can we ask Chairwoman, sorry to come up? You said you had some names that you wanted us to strike off? And I know I received one from Mr. Pooter. He asked to not be re-upped. Okay.
I have my list down here.
Okay. Yes, the first one I got was from Nick Pooter. I also got an email from Jim Sheaf.
Okay.
And Bill Dahl.
Okay.
I had also gotten one previously from Bob Coppola.
Did he, did he email he's coming back from?
He's, yeah, he's had some health issues. He is, I believe, going home tomorrow.
Yep.
But he was unsure about his attendance at future meetings.
Okay.
So I haven't confirmed with him about the advisory panel. But he did, he did mention to me that he'd be willing to step down if it was affecting our quorum.
Okay.
I think he's, he's really knowledgeable, so I'm not looking to exactly have him step off, but I'd love to keep him on as an advisory member.
Michelle, I have a question. So are the people that you, that want to be removed, do they want to stay on as in part of an advisory group?
Yes.
Okay.
An advisory panel that we've not created yet.
And my next question is, okay, so now you have 17 members.
Right.
Do you feel this will facilitate a quorum?
I do. Assuming a quorum is what we've been acting on, which is half plus one, that would mean nine, and we've never had fewer than nine people at a meeting.
And that fulfills the quorum?
2011 would be a quorum for 21 persons.
Seventeen, right, nine.
Okay.
All right, so...
And could, oh, I'm sorry, just kind of for house cleaning, if they wanted to set up an advisory group?
They could do within, no, this is not a, this is not a charter, a charter commission.
So, so you could do that within your own group, set up your advisory committee?
Okay.
Hey, it's okay that we just cross people off this list because of our agenda?
Yeah, this is...
Yeah, because we haven't voted on it yet.
This is not a charter commission. The mayor could have done this without a document. Absolutely. I mean, that hockey.
Gives us something to do, Mike.
Yeah, it does, because we need to be here every night.
Michelle, have the other 17 are good to go? Have you talked to them and everybody's willing to stay and serve for another six months?
I haven't talked to everyone because I just spoke with the mayor on Friday. So this all happened because someone saw the revised agenda and sent an email out, and the next thing I know, people were saying, "Well, I would step down to advisory, I would step down." So now, you know, these are only the people I've heard from.
But if you're confident you can get nine at a meeting, then it doesn't matter if these people are listed or not, if they don't come, as long as you can get the nine.
They've all been, I would say, you know, pretty consistent attendees.
17.
Right.
But nine at a time.
Right.
Lisa?
All right, so before we renew the committee, I actually had some other questions besides the membership. Thank you for coming tonight. Really important topic. I think it's an important investment in our community, so we really need to have the right answer. We had a robust discussion last town council that Jeff Winter came to, I think he was the one or two committee members that came. Why is the committee not, besides the quorum issue, why is the committee not ready to give us their final report tonight? So we were appointed...
Can I interrupt? Is that on the agenda?
So when you, well, here's a good question, and I don't know the answer to it. When we're renewing a committee, are we not allowed to ask about the work product of that committee?
That's my question.
That's my question. Can we not? For starters?
There's two lawyers here, we shouldn't even link that answer. Absolutely, absolutely.
I can, I can ask this question?
Sure. They're going to be where you are.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, I didn't know. Why is the committee not ready to give its final report? Sorry.
Okay, so we were appointed at a town council meeting on January 22nd for a six-month term ending July 23rd.
Yep.
I know I didn't receive notice until February. I have a letter here dated February 26th. And then our first meeting was scheduled in March and was canceled due to a storm.
Okay.
You know, that's, we live in New England.
Yep.
So our first actual meeting was March 15th, and we hit the ground running. Two weeks later was our first meeting, you know, as a, as a committee, not, you know, not called by the mayor. It was our own meeting.
The first working session, yeah.
So that was March 29th. So we essentially lost two months at the beginning there.
Okay.
Our last four meetings, we haven't had a quorum, and a lot of that has to do with the size of the committee, the fact that, I mentioned earlier, we had two members who resigned pretty early on, and then we had two others who never showed up, never got sworn in.
So what progress has been made since you guys hit the ground running? A number of subcommittees looking through your meeting minutes.
Right.
Can you kind of describe your process and how you've come about?
So at our first official meeting, March 29th, we, we spoke extensively about, you know, what is a community center? And then we kind of broke into four subcommittees. And those subcommittees have, we've met during meetings and some people have done their own work outside of the meetings. So what we were trying to do for a July town council meeting was put something together from each subcommittee to show our progress so far. from each subcommittee to show our progress so far and to show that we have made progress, but we do need more time. The problem is, we didn't realize that town council only meets once this month. So our term is up July 23rd. We thought there was a meeting July 23rd. So I'm still waiting to get some reports from some of the subcommittees to put something together for a presentation. So we will be ready to present something. It'll be preliminary, but something at the August meeting. And we're asking for an extension because, like I said, we lost two months right off the top.
How much more time do you think you need?
We had talked about six months, bringing us to January of 2019, but we're hoping that we don't need that long.
And what would be your next steps should you be renewed?
So our outreach committee has sent out a survey. I think most people have probably gotten it. We're waiting on some of those results to come back so that we know what our next steps will be. There's a, the last question on the survey is kind of open-ended, asking people, what would you like to see? And the responses that they're gathering are things that we kind of want to look into. If people are saying they want it, we should at least give them the courtesy of looking into it, even if we think, you know, it might be too costly or might not serve the whole town, whatever the case may be. We want to, we want to look into things and, you know, hopefully serve the whole town. So the, as of last Thursday, our outreach committee had received over 1,200 responses to the survey. It had only been out for about a week and a half.
How is it out? How did you send it out? Like mail or?
We have some hard copies. We have, they used Survey Monkey through the library's account, the school system, and I'm not sure if Park and Rec sent it out. But there are several different town agencies that were sending it out to try to reach all demographics from our community.
So it did a pretty good job getting it.
Right. So we have, we know we have over 1,200 responses.
I didn't get one.
I didn't get one. Did you get one, Doug?
I got an email.
Michael?
No.
Tom?
Nope.
B?
I got one because it was a school.
Okay, so you had a 50-50 split here on some people. You might want to make sure that somebody sends it to us.
Oh, before that step. So I don't know if you had a chance to review the meeting minutes from our last town council or if Mr. Winter conveyed the discussion, which was pretty robust, about market research versus a survey. So fairly strong opinion about that, because that's kind of my wheelhouse of what I did. To get this right is so important. It's really important that we have a survey result that represents the demographic of the town. There's a science and an art to that. And I'm pretty concerned that the methodology for sending out the survey, although very well intentioned, cannot guarantee those results, number one. And number two, there's nothing that can prevent somebody from taking the survey multiple times and submitting it and skewing the results of what you're about to do.
I believe some people tried that. Greg, did you try? You tried. Was unsuccessful?
I was able to do it eight times.
Really?
And I stopped.
Okay, I heard, I heard other people said that they were unsuccessful.
So I applaud the outreach committee for, you know, doing a grassroots effort, but you know, this is again an 18 to $20 million project. So to spend the money upfront on market research, I think, absolutely makes sense investing in our future the right way. So if we were to continue this committee, and I believe we need to in some way, shape, or form, you know, again, the conclusion we came to last town council, and I'm not sure where the breakdown in communication is, I was actually expecting the committee to come back with three market research firms that had been explored and recommendation tonight as to how to conduct that market research. Did Jeff Winter not convey that to you?
I watched the video. I know what happened at the last meeting.
Okay.
But what we wanted to do was take, this is a preliminary survey. This was just some basic questions. We wanted to get this information first before asking the town for, I think it was $30,000 for a survey. Have somebody come in and do that?
So again, I think there was a question about money at our last town council, so the request was go talk to three firms, find out what the price is and what the methodology would be, and come back and see if that was something you wanted to do.
No question. Michelle?
I agree.
You saw the video and Mr. Winter was here. He is a member of the committee, right?
Right.
So we did discuss getting some bids on doing the survey. And my reason for asking about sending it to us is because whether it's properly crafted and surveys are an art, most definitely, when you talk about it, whether what you're going to gather is good or bad, you're dealing with talking to half the people here who have no idea what you even asked. So we wouldn't even have a frame of reference on that. My bigger question for you, as you mentioned earlier that during public comment, that you weren't really sure, I guess as a group, not just you personally, about what your mission, your goal was. Were you to deal with Pettibone or were you to deal with a community center as a whole?
That was not me.
I'm sorry, it was you. Okay. Pat, as a member of the committee. I guess right away, my first thought is, how can that be? After, I was right in saying you've met 12 to 14 times, how can that be that you've worked at all these, I know you didn't always have a quorum, but your discussion and your groups that are broken out, how, what are you talking about if you're not clear on the goal?
We've gone by the charge that was sent to us from February 26th.
Okay, but was Pat, were you one of the ones that weren't there?
Of course, he was charged since the first meeting.
Okay, no one defined it. Did anybody come to?
The grade mold at the first, at the first meeting said we need to go back to the town council and we need to ask them to firm up what they actually want for us or not. We know what we want, I agree, and we just have never.
Okay, so.
Without people there, we can't get anywhere.
I guess, then I would say, Michelle, is that I appreciate all the work and everything, but what I'm going to ask when we do come forward is, what have you based all this, whatever you bring, on? Because clearly, we didn't ask for somebody to decide whether Pettibone was the right place. The charge was, what does the town see? Do we need one? If we do, what's it look like? Et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of six months have gone by. I know you missed it because of the weather and bad grouping of people. But I think at some point, you need to get very clear when you get back together, because if you're going to go out and ask for somebody to help you price out a survey, they're going to need to know what your charge is.
Well, to clarify, we did vote on it and we did say that.
Okay, let's, just let, let's let, Michelle, sorry. So just so you understand, I think you can see why some of us might be a little confused that you've done all this and it's not all cohesive and we don't want you to have to go on again and again and not. So you're getting fewer people. If you have a question about what exactly it should be, or if the people that you're working with have a question, this man's door is open all the time, so.
Great, well, we've been, we've been using, like I said, the charge that was given to us. It says to study the feasibility of a community center in New Milford, a community center's composition, operational structure, and finances, and any steps needed to legally accomplish the creation of a community center. Where in there does it tell us what building to use?
Correct.
That's why it's unclear.
So that's how you've been talking?
That's what we was talking about.
That's all your discussions?
Those three items.
Okay.
And that's how we, that's how we formed our subcommittees.
So it's just some disconnect or misunderstanding with some of the members, maybe?
No, I think we all agree that we were not given a building to discuss, but this is the charge that was given to us by town council.
At the creation.
Yeah, I know. I know. That's why the word Pettibone wasn't in there, just like the Woodley Street or any other building.
Right, there's no building mentioned there.
Okay. So then you haven't been discussing it that way, is what you're saying?
No. I mean, we're talking about, we've been talking to and getting presentations from some of the agencies that are already in what is currently our community center.
Those are municipal agencies.
Right. And we have been talking to them and having them present to us how it's working for them being, you know, with other agencies in the same, you know, under the same roof and how they're working together, because that is part of a community center.
Is it? Is that what your group decided?
It's municipal office building.
Municipal offices are part of a community center?
And sometimes they are.
You can't ignore the elephant in the room.
Well, we, yeah, we discussed this last week. No, but if that's what you come up with, that's, it's your committee. I'm not, I don't, you don't need to explain it to me now. I just wanted to be sure that that was clear, because to me, one of your members made that comment and I thought, well, let's hope this wasn't a wasted three months because of the weather, so.
Are we allowed to have any other members at the committee talk?
You can ask, you can ask anyone to come up and speak to the council.
Does anyone want to come up and join her up here? Come on up. One at a time would probably be good. I just see him hands up and I'm just pointing.
All right, I'll.
Michelle is up.
I'll just, I'll just add a couple of things going on in Survey Monkey. I had some concerns, which I brought up at the meeting, about how valid the Survey Monkey could be. And I went back to one of the, one of the survey companies that I've been dealing with about the validity of that, because they also offer a Survey Monkey option to gather their data as well as a more statistically significant form by going direct mail, direct questions and that way, which is what I think the $30,000 number that we got, it's mailing and their time and flying back and forth and so forth. But what I thought was interesting about the question was, they said that even though there's the ability for abuse in these online surveys, statistically, it's never been significant since they've seen it. So it usually lined up with the more valid type of surveys. So I thought that was an interesting point, so.
So they have a way, sorry to interrupt. So they have a way, and you can do it with changing up your questions, to prevent somebody from, again, doing multiple Survey Monkeys, number one. They don't.
They do not.
Because two, you can put a marker in the Survey Monkey question specific to that demographic group, so you know which one goes where. And you mark them out.
And who made up the questions? Because that's really the root of any survey that you do. How you posed them? Who wrote them? Your committee?
The outreach committee did.
We definitely get a copy of that like tomorrow.
You have children in the school. You should have gotten a personal system.
I got nothing.
I got two children in the school. I know, I got a twice.
This has happened before with two children in the school, sitting at this table for nine years. So I'd love to, I don't want to get aggressive.
I got the Park and Rec in, I got the school.
I'd like to get one tomorrow, please, by somebody. Thank you.
Could our, could the, your office send it out to the, everybody so that the missions and boards?
Sure.
Was there more?
So the other things that I wanted to bring up were doing some of this work on my own, outside of the subcommittee responsible for that, is I reached out to one company, which I have a quote from, which I think most people know what that dollar amount is. A couple of people have seen it. I think I had it with me. I also reached out to two other companies. One, I think, that did the POCD survey and a company actually that, actually my vendor that I approached uses. And so I made an attempt to get three so far, but I only got one. My intention is to continue to go out and get a couple more for you.
Great.
Obviously with pass it by the other part. The other thing I want to say is, we don't all agree on this issue and that there is difference of opinion with our charge still today. So, and I see that as a problem. I don't know that it's a big problem because we're a voting body and that should take care of itself if we're doing it properly. So I'm pretty confident that we're staying to task.
What exactly is the question or the disagreement amongst the members? And Pat filled through the chime.
What are charges? Well, there are, there are a couple of people that think that JPS is our charge.
Michelle was very clear as the committee leader, committee chair, that that's not part of the charge.
Right.
So where's, where's the disconnect in the group?
And this is all part of putting together two different, you know, we've got Republicans on one side, Democrats, and more importantly, just people with different opinions.
It's like engineers and marketers in the same room, like been through their entire life and no part of development.
So it's to be expected, and I think that's the great part. I love the idea that the mayor put really strong opinions in the same room so that we can sit down and talk to each other. So, but you're going to have differences with him and that's fine. And I think that was, that was the original concept of going back to the town council, try to get some clarity. I think we're through that.
But Greg, can I just interrupt a second?
Yeah.
How can you say that you've had some good conversation from both sides when, as Michelle said, you've had meetings where you can't get a quorum? People are dropping off, don't come. I don't, I don't see that maybe it's been a real conversation, whether it's robust or heated in any way, doesn't, I'm just saying, how can you really say that? Because you don't know. I wouldn't care one way or the other what their political affiliation was. There's just different feelings about this. We know that. That's one of the reasons I thought we took that building out of the charge, that it is about a community center, not the building that's there, which is housing municipal agencies.
So to Katie's point, one of the ideas in my head when I was looking through the agenda item, and I don't know off the cuff if you know this, Michelle, but if you've got somebody who's missed three meetings in a row, or has missed four meetings during the term of the committee's being, being, because they got a late start, then I think those are candidates who are getting crossed off, because clearly, they're not going to go out and do the work and they're not going to have the continuity of the conversation. That's something that other municipalities do. So it's just something to think about as you're picking and choosing, because I still think 17 is too many. I know I'm going down swinging. Eight to 10 people in a group is what you need if you want to get stuff done.
Right, I'm going to ask you, Michelle, you don't say who they are. You have 17 people now that we've called out and some people have dropped off. If you go down this list and look at all the people that are left, are all of these people who've come to every single meeting that you've held?
No, speaking to every single meeting, we wouldn't have a quorum.
Well, they don't get that. So what I'm saying is that you have people on this list still who have not attended and, or maybe attended once, and really not versed on what's going on. So number one, you try to play a catch-up when they do come, or they're talking over things that have already been talked about. So why not make it a smaller committee?
Well, I spoke with the mayor about this the other day. I'm not one to tell people they shouldn't volunteer for our town. If they're interested and they want to be part of it, I think they should.
But interested in being there, but they're not, they're not interested. That's like being, you know, being a member of any committee, and you've obviously been there. And I think that if you don't show up, all the good intentions aren't really valuable because you're not putting anything into this.
Can we make those rules for town council, too?
Yeah, sure. But right now, we're talking about this. I just think that it does hold true. And are you opposed to having fewer than 17 people?
I'm not opposed to it. Some of the people.
You don't want to make that decision, no?
Right, well, some of the people who haven't come, haven't come for various, you Right. Well, some of the people who haven't come, haven't come for various, you know, different reasons. It's not, it's not the same person every time, and it's not the same excuse every time. You know, we have some people who have had to travel out of town for work, and have been gone, you know, in misdemeanor. We've had people with health issues. It's, it's different, and it's different people every time. And we have some people who are involved on, you know, involved with other town boards and committees, and-
But they made the decision to put themselves on this, and I think by having the number that we're here, while the idea may have been good to put the strong and whatever together, you're just setting yourself up for X number of people, just by human nature, to not be there. So you're always making up for that. So I, I still think 17 is too many, but I don't, that's up to you and the mayor, I guess.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I think, in a way, far the argument of having such a large committee is kind
of unruly, but I think for the first blush, a large body of, of varying opinions is good. And maybe there will be a community center committee number two. That will be seven people, after this is whittled down to what some, with a very broad section of this community wants. Not a specific group, not one that's just focused on one building or anything else. It's got to be extremely broad, or else this will have absolutely no standing in the community. So I think you do 17 now, and then after the report in January, hopefully way before that, we get this to down to CCC, we call it CCC two, and we can get some seven or eight people in here, nine people, that can whittle down what you, what you work on. I mean, we can, we can beat up everybody who doesn't show up on these committees all night long. We can beat her tomorrow.
Oh, I don't want to beat them up. I, they have good intentions. I think people had them when this started, and you had bad weather, I understand. But after four months of no snow, you would like to think there'd be a, somebody would feel a responsibility that they all, or enough of them, get together.
Right.
I think we're, sorry, just, I think we've gone a little far here with, you know, this isn't, these guys don't work for us, they don't collect the salary. I think we kind of beat them up a little bit too much, and you can say we're not, but we are, and I don't-
Asking questions about a committee with a charge like this, that's what we're here to do.
No, I know, but they, but they came here to say they want a little bit more time.
It's about the committee, and if there's misunderstanding of what they're there to do, and there are people not coming, it's our job to ask these questions.
And if there's also people, and if there's also people- There's still volunteers.
Of course, of course.
You can't beat these guys up. What my recommendation is, is you call the 17, 16, if you don't call yourself. Call the 16 people and come back next time with a list of the people and a recommendation. That's my suggestion. Or you can talk, I guess you can just talk to them.
Well, if they feel confident-
But they're going to lapse, so we, we need to-
Now, we got to vote these 17.
We need to-
Doesn't matter.
Go forward.
Is it two legal hours? What difference is it?
No, no, we only have, no, it's a month. We don't have another meeting until August.
Right.
It's a month.
Okay, it's a month. What difference is it?
They're convinced.
Because they're, they're on a roll. They're going to lose momentum.
No, we're voting this today.
Is it possible to do something shorter than six months? There's some time urgency on this. Let's make some decisions. Let's get some people to the table.
Yeah, I would not want to wait till Jan, when you say January.
Yeah, that's too long.
That's, it is.
May I just, because in the beginning, when I said there was a question about Pettibone, I specifically asked that question, because in the beginning, we did ask that question, and we didn't, we purposely have not looked at a building, we looked at the issues and what we felt the community needed. And we did vote that we thought it was necessary as a committee to have a municipal community center. So that has already transpired. After that is when we started having, because we were getting such a large committee and couldn't get a quorum, that's where our problems ran into it. And the only reason I brought up Pettibone tonight is because I thought we were getting a survey last meeting at the council meeting, and I didn't come. And then I went back to read the council minutes to see why we didn't get one, because we've had zero budget to work with. And I read where you asked about Pettibone. So that was why I said tonight.
I asked if, I said it was the elephant in the room, and it is. Whenever we talk about-
Actually, I, I pulled the meeting minutes.
That's not what was in the minutes.
What's in the meeting minutes is, Mrs. Francis said Pettibone is being called a community center, but it's really a municipal office center, and that a marketing firm should come in with no preconceived notion.
So that was my, my fault. I read the minutes, and I thought you were questioning about Pettibone, and that's why I brought it up tonight. It's got nothing to do with what's been going on with the committee. I just read that section.
Well, that's good to know.
You know, we have one other member of this committee who's been standing up, I know, who's had his hand up. Mr. Looney, would you like to?
No, I just want to add, I mean, the, the same, I mean, the town council members say, "Well, you're supposed to be talking about a community center, and you're talking about a municipal center." It's clear just from those comments alone, from our town council, that you don't know what a community center is made up of, because there are multiple community centers in many areas that consist, they're called a community center, and they're the senior center in the library. And that's a community center in some towns. So, I mean, if you guys have some in-depth knowledge at our meetings, we have public comment. So we would love to see you guys come, like we see many other, well, not as many as we would like to see.
Well, you have so many on your committee, you really don't need us to just-
But, 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 and it seemed like I was asked to speak. I think that's bad taste, when I come to many town council meetings, and there are many town council people who don't show up. So I think for you to make a comment to us that we don't show up, I think realistically is, is poor taste.
I didn't make a comment to those of you that are here, Steve. I said, if you have members, that some, you should have called some out, which is what she's doing.
I understand, I mean, that's why we're doing it now, because we have, we have tried, we have tried to get a quorum. We're not able to do that. We can't even make a proposal in our group to come to you guys, because we can't have a quorum, so we can't get to you.
All right, the question-
Excuse me.
Do you ask the other people to come to the main?
So, Brandy, real quick, their question was on the floor, is the, the term of the committee, can the expiration date be changed?
Yes, it can. You can do that right now. That's the committee, it's not a commission. So you can do that.
All right, let's move on.
To three months?
You really should be debating. That's not, that's not what this was for. Not a debate, right?
You could shorten it if you want.
So-
Four months, three months, what are we thinking?
I'm not good with the committee at all. I think it should be shrunk down before it continues. They're not getting anything done.
I don't want to wait until August. We lose them all.
How much time do you need?
We can vote on it, then I can-
How much time do you guys think you can?
To be fair, we are getting some things done. There are a lot of people that are not doing anything.
Yeah.
Okay. And then with, like any committee, you got three or four that are doing all the work, okay? So-
And we, we did split up into subcommittees, and Greg, and many other people, Nick Futter and so, we've, we've reached out to the culinary institute. We've toured the buildings. We've toured with Parks and Rec. We've met with other groups that may want space in our community center, so we want to see where we can overlap different groups and different people in a smaller space. So, even though we're not making our quorum, you know, still on Tuesday mornings or on Friday afternoons, we're going out to meet with other people yet, and we go back for a meeting. We don't have enough people to talk to. We talk amongst each other. For still, the people who show up, the nine people that show up, talk for an hour and a half. It's not an official meeting. We get some input from the community that's there. And we do our thing, but the quorum issue realistically is what's pertinent. I still personally feel like, Mr. Wolf, I feel that the 17 that are on here, I have missed one or two meetings myself, I will admit to that, but we have had many members that have made one or two meetings, and we've never seen them, and they're not our people.
All right. Back to my point. Do you feel confident you can get nine people on this list at, at your meetings?
I think so.
And if we amended, if we, if we amended it to November 24th, would that give you enough time? Shorten it by two months, would that give you enough time to come back to us? I mean, it's a monstrous issue.
Well, honestly, I, I, this is personal, but I mean, there are two people on this list that I would like to see not on the list, but that's not for me to decide.
Is it because they don't show up?
Yeah. But that's not my, I think that's Michelle's job to, to, no, really, to go back and say-
I don't even know if we have anything that says that we can ask people to leave if they've missed a certain number of meetings, because we're, we're a committee.
Once, if I'm not mistaken, once a committee has expired, the entire membership is up for either renewal or not. I mean, you can change a little thing up.
So, so, if you want to bring a couple of names forward, Greg, to this council, because they're going to decide, I'm assuming tonight, you just said there are two people, so who would they be?
We're asking for a problem, is that what?
Yeah, I'd rather talk than not.
On this one. Listen, I, I personally think whether, I'm happy with the performance, Michelle's happy with the performance of these two. We've got down to seven, did we get down to 17?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so, so we're going to be okay, even if we got a couple of people that are useless.
So now, now we solve that issue, we're at 17. So now, let's go to the expiration date. Does the council feel we need to lessen it?
Uh-
To the chairman, what's your thoughts?
Make it six, if you're backing four.
I know. That's exactly what I was going to say.
Yeah, I don't think it saves anybody anything to, to take it off a couple of months.
All right, so do we have, can we make a motion?
I, right now. I'd like to move the appointment of the community center committee, all of the terms, starting on July 24, 2018, expiring January 24, 2019. The following people, Frank Wargo, Julie Leerson, Heidi Edel, Jeff Winter, Cindy Davis, Leah Gill, Peg Molina, John Oaks, Timothy Fotopoulos, Michelle Legori, Steve Christos, Pat Erickson, Charles Bogie, Frank Greco, Greg Mullen, Colin Kogle, and Steve Looney.
Second.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Notice the one that-
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the-
I'd like to, I'd like to move the appointment of the Lake Willona Authority. Again, their term continues for all, July 9, 2018, through October 31, 2018, to cover the 2018 voting season. The officer, marine officers are John Puglisi, Kevin Brooks, Chris Rosato, Sean Flynn, Matthew Donadio, Mitchell Heller, Aaron Blank, Kelsey Sullivan, and Tom Robbins. The Lake Marine Assistance, the same, 2018 voting season, starting July 9, 2018, through 10/31, 2018. Nicholas Puglisi, Charles Weeks, Stephen Lyons, Connor Donadio.
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 Any discussion?
Just one. So I'm sorry.
Mike?
We can vote on people that don't live in town, is that what?
Yes, because it's the authority. This is for the lake. It's like the Cantaloupe Lake Authority, this is the Lake Willona.
I have the same question, thank you.
They're approved by the other members, probably.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we had a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I'd like to move, we go into executive session, inviting town attorneys, Matt Grimes, Randy Devilla.
Greg Valero.
Greg Valero.
And Mike Zarba.
Mike Zarba, is he here? There he is.
Yep.
And Mike.
Keep turning the camera on.
Okay, let the record show that there were no motions made, no votes taken, and